Test, test. Testing.
Who brought the chocolate?
They don't do well for tests.
You ready? You ready?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We will reconvene from closed session. And I would ask the city attorney to report on anything.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The city council is in closed session this evening on conference with labor negotiator and conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. And there's no action to report on either of those items.
Thank you. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to announce that this council observes the Community of Character Coalition ethics. So next, we will have the roll call.
Councilmember Powers?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Can I make one comment? Randy Shelton would like me to convey to everybody he is under the weather today and will not be attending the meeting.
We will have a moment of silent prayer. And then after that, we will be followed by Boy Scout Troop 238 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Audience, please stand. Call guard advance. Call guard, prepare to close colors. Salute. Close colors. Audience, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Call guard, this is.
Okay, would the city clerk please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and SherWest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Agenda approval, are there any additions or deletions?
I believe we want to try to move the solar project as number F1.
And when do you want to move it?
Up through. That's right, up through consent. Can we move it right after presentation? I believe there's some...
Is there...
No?
Is that okay with council?
Yes. Okay, never mind.
What?
I thought someone had a plane to catch, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay.
So we'll keep it right after consent.
We're ready for presentations. And I think Mr. Holliday wanted to do the first one.
Yes, this is the agenda. I'd like to have Paul Tour step up the podium, please. Why don't I introduce Paul? He is the new deputy director in the Public Works Department. He survived his first week, last week, so he came back. We didn't scare him away. Paul has a very long history of a tremendous breadth of experience. He spent 20 years in the city of Banning, started as an associate, worked his way up to director. He then spent three years in the city of Coachella down near Palm Springs. He comes with transportation, utility, transit, airport experience, and is really going to be an asset to public works. I just wanted to get him here, he'll be before you. He's already hit the ground running on a lot of projects. He'll be managing the interchange project. Eventually will take over the Twin Cities Roundabouts Project in addition to helping manage my staff. So, Paul, you want to say hello?
Thank you, Dave. Honorable mayor, member of the city council, I'm pleased to be here. It is a privilege to be a member of this Galt family, and I look forward to serving the community the best of my ability. Thank you.
Let's make you feel welcome. Thank you.
Excellent.
His name is Al, and he'll be getting you every time.
And I think we have another presentation from the Historical Society.
Several months ago, and it seems forever, we came to you and said it was time for us to identify the next four landmarks that are historic in the city of Galt. We chose this time to identify four homes. Those were chosen, and before we have the plaques, all four plaques made, and since you folks said you would pick up the tab, I asked the man who is creating the plaques to make it the one that would be for the Ray House, so that you could all see it. And then, if you approve of it, then I will call him tomorrow and say, okay, you can go ahead. The plaque itself is very similar to the four that we put on the four churches. It's identical, actually, except it's a little bit smaller. And he suggested it be smaller for homes. He said, people don't want to have a great big thing hanging on their house. He said, make it look nice, neat, attractive, but keep the same logo. So this is what he has done. And if you like it and you approve of it, then we will go ahead and give him the go-ahead to do the four. Then we hope you'll join us each time as we present the plaques to the different homes. There'll be four different occasions. We're going to save the Ray House plaque till June, because in June, we will be celebrating 20 years that we have our little museum in Galt. And so it's going to be a very special occasion, and we thought we would combine putting the plaque up as well as celebrating the occasion. So you'll be hearing more. We definitely want you all there for the day, and it'll be a delightful afternoon, I am sure, in June. So I will give you more information on that as soon as we have some definite things in place. Any comments about the plaque or questions?
Would you like an answer tonight?
I really would love it.
Is that something we can just get a consensus on, whether we like this or not?
You can certainly have a consensus on whether you like it, but as far as authorizing the expenditure of any funds, it is not on the agenda.
Actually, the funds have already been expended, and the deal's already been done through...
So as far as consensus on whether you like it, that's certainly something you can do tonight.
Does anybody have any objections to this plaque, or are you happy with it? I think it's beautiful.
I think it's great.
Well, well made.
What are the other three houses?
Where are the other four, or the other three houses?
Yes.
The other three houses are the Eiler House, which is on C Street. It's the pretty two-story white one on, I believe that's Fifth and C, on the corner across from the Methodist Church. Okay, that was the Eiler House. And that dates back into the 1800s again. Help me. The three, the three, out of three. The Eiler? Oh, Dr. Harms' house. He was the first doctor in Galt, and he's on Third Street. And so that little house is all nicely restored, and it's available, and it's going to be, they are very excited about the fact they've been chosen. That's two. The Ray House was three, and the fourth one...
This is a test to see if you can pass.
Huh?
This is, this is your test.
Oh, dear, and I'm having an awful time remembering.
Think about all those students that you tested when you were...
Oh, hush up. This isn't fair. The four pictures are sitting up in the hall. Sunny South is one, that's the Eiler House. The Ray House. The Brewster House, good heavens. How could I not remember that one? The Brewster House is the other one. They're all the 1800s, every last one of them.
All right, well, we won't make you stand in the corner, I think. Thank you, Mrs. Elson.
Could I just add something? I just happened to look very quickly at the agenda, and I noticed that the Brewster renovation is going to be coming up before the council. And I wanted to just speak on behalf of the Historical Society, and also as kind of a native of this place, this wonderful town, how very grateful we are to these wonderful people who have come in and taken an eyesore and restored it beautifully, even to going back and putting up the old Brewster sign, which is so lovely. I made a, we had a picture taken, and we sent it to the Brewster family in Palo Alto. They were thrilled. And I just wanted to say, I just think they are wonderful for doing this, and I hope you all agree.
Well, and they happen to be here, so they just heard you say that.
Oh, good. Thank you very, very much. And I will tell the gentlemen tomorrow that the plaques are on the way.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public. You may also address any agenda item during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Rick Reese?
Hello, city council. I'm here to speak about the, make a comment about the farmer's market that's about to start on Lincoln. I'd like to see if maybe you guys might reconsider locating it. Anywhere closed would be great, other than blocking off the street. I know that before I came into town, and you guys were thinking about doing the farmer's market, one of the general ideas of the whole farmer's market was not to have to close down a city street. That's one of the reasons why you guys were going to have it in the park by the flea market, the parking lot there, then move it to the other park down across by the railroad tracks. And then it seems like it's come full circle, put it right on Lincoln. And I just, it's hurting my business, bottom line. I mean, and there's times, economic times, it's tough to keep the doors open. You know, $500 to $700 a month hitting my business, hitting my wallet. It's a big hit. And I think, I'm hoping that you guys will reconsider at least moving it to the parking lot across the street. I think that's a great idea. I know I've been pretty outspoken about it, because it was hurting me. And maybe I came off wrong or whatever, but I let my anger get the best of me. And I'm here to apologize to anybody that I offended or upset, but at the same time, it just rubbed me wrong when I seen how hard it was hitting me. But I've come to bring it to you guys, to your attention, and maybe you guys might reconsider relocating it or putting it in a spot where you're not closing down a street or hurting a business. I have three other letters from three other businesses on that block that it is hurting. So I'm not the only one. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate your comment.
All right, thanks.
Gene Davenport?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm Gene Davenport, I live in the city. I'm here tonight to request, it's really short notice, that I have a, most of you know I have a stepdaughter with disabilities, and she's a part of the adult community here in Galt. And the governor, his proposed budget is going to slash no less than 20%, probably more, from the California Disability Services Group. And that, just from that group alone, it, the 20% doesn't sound like a lot, but when you go through and do the numbers, and he takes more out, it's gonna, it's gonna creep up where the only funding they're gonna get is what the federal mandate is, they have to, what the state has to do. So, a lot of these adults that are interacting in the community today are gonna be without services. If they don't have the daycare, they don't have the functions that they do, they don't have the participation in the job workforce, they lose that ability to intermingle with people, and they get withdrawn, and they stay withdrawn. And it's really hard when you get somebody with disabilities to come back out, because it takes so long to get them to the point where they're at. Like my stepdaughter, she has really good retention with things she wants, and things that she doesn't, we have a hard time, we go over the line. I would be doing this with, if I had any children at all with disabilities, because these people are so important to this community. And I think you all have, you know, participated in events that help support them. All path along is pretty much a form letter that they put together for us, that we're gonna send to all the representatives. I'm gonna call on the representatives personally, the ones that I know, and I'm gonna also go to Lowdy and Stockton after their participation in sponsoring a resolution of the governor to take this program and treat it like he did the K-12, because there's no touch to K-12 education, which I think is important, but what's really kinda like, I'm on the bubble on this, I'm really kinda angry about it, the prison system is not gonna take one, one cut at all, of any kind. It's gonna be untouched. And I think his, if you put that in comparison to what the, what these programs do for these people, I think it's wrong and it's unjust. And so I'm asking that the city council, I'll get you all the information that I can possibly get to you by midweek next week, and if you can act on this with haste, because his budget is gonna come up for finalization on the 17th of March. And I think he's using this budget to kinda like get something done on the June election that he's got for the tax cut. I think he's playing politics, but he's good at that. So I would just, if I could get the community support from Stockton, Lowdy, and Galt, I think it'd be really important, it would at least open up our, the people that represent us, to look at this deeper and go to him and say, look, we have to back up here a little bit. I don't, you know, I totally understand, everybody's gotta take a hit, I mean, everybody should take a hit in this economy, really, we all do. But to take something away from people that have always been less representative in the community than any other fact, any other group, I just think is wrong. And I think it's gonna eventually hit everybody, if, just the 20%, and I'm not using this as an excuse, I'm just showing you an example. If this happens and they take away that daycare, my stepdaughter is gonna have to stay home. She stays home, my wife has to quit her job. She quits her job, I'm gonna be the sole supporter of the family. Okay, we'll have to cut ties, but we'll do it. There's other families that can't, cannot absolutely accept that. They will go on public assistance, they're on welfare, and some people will die, period. And it's wrong. And I just hope, with the information I can get to you by midweek, you guys can go over that, and I'll do whatever you need me to do, but I'll get you everything I possibly can get you to sponsor a resolution to the governor on this. And I appreciate your time.
Mr. Davenport, let me ask our city attorney, what is it that we as a council could do as far as a resolution on this?
Well, I haven't seen what Mr. Davenport passed out, but my understanding is he was asking you to potentially put an item on your agenda for consideration as sending a, sending a letter on behalf of the city council.
Correct.
Now, with his deadline, is that something we would have to request to be on the next agenda, or help me out with the timing on that?
It seems like it would be, it would work if it was on our next city council meeting.
If it was on our next council meeting, it'd be great. And then that way, you know, because everything, as long as we get it to them, like say, a couple days out, I mean, in the end term, they're gonna get a lot of pressure anyway. But I think this just goes to say, you know, we'll show them, if we can get, you know, the cities to participate in this. It's a community, it's a community that needs to fight for itself. I know other, look, everybody's got issues, and this is no more important or no less important than those issues. But these people will be affected personally, and it will be, it's just, I think it's very unfair to look at this, to cut it the way he's got it planned.
I think then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done. I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna ask then, if it would be appropriate to ask the council to put it on the next agenda? Is that, is that our process?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, councilman Singleton?
Thank you. Mr. Davenport, I, as you may or may not remember, I do have a severely handicapped brother that looks forward to these programs. He's ready to go for these programs. If we do not support Mr. Davenport and his endeavor, he's right, these people, all they're gonna do is sit in a room, and they're gonna start dying off, or they're gonna be in institutions. So I will back this, 100%.
And I don't think they'd be in institutions unless they were private institutions.
Well, what I'm saying is, the state is gonna, because the state's cutting back so much, if these people are taking care of some of these individuals, are gonna be cut back an hour so much that they, it's not even worth it to help out these individuals. And they do help out these individuals by teaching them, showing them how to do menial jobs, just little jobs to take care of themselves. So you will get my support on this, sir.
So I would ask at this time, is it the consensus of the council to put this on the next agenda?
I would say yes, you got my thoughts.
Okay.
You know, I also want to just, on the way, I just wanted to comment on the group homes that we have in Galt for these disabled people. They're some of the best in the state, period. We have great group homes there. Thank you so much for your time.
That's good, Ken. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Gene. Matthew Padilla?
Oh, excuse me, real quick, Gene, do you want these back? That's just for our information and stuff? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gene.
Miss Mayor, distinguished council members, my name is Matthew Padilla, and I'm a resident of Elk Grove. My purpose today is to ask for the support of the Galt City Council to open a farmer's market dedicated to the medical cannabis community. This will benefit patients in the city of Galt in revenue through permits, fees, taxes, and increase business to local merchants. Proposition 215 was approved over a decade ago, allowing legal possession and cultivation of cannabis for licensed medical patients. Trusted Resources report that over 400,000 Californians currently possess medical cannabis prescription. These patients are your family members, victims of cancer, college students, professionals with a plethora of ailments. The vision of my proposal, a farmer's market, would be a safe, secure environment that would bring the producers of medical cannabis in direct contact with the patients. My plan would be to work closely with the Galt City Council and law enforcement to meet all security and zoning requirements. The service is available only to licensed individuals possessing a current prescription from a licensed doctor. In short, any person who does not possess or meet these requirements, or could possibly jeopardize the legitimacy of the proposed market, would not be allowed on the premises. As do I, I'm sure everybody here has a family member that's suffering from a disease or a medical ailment. I'm here this evening to ask for the opportunity to present and discuss additional facts at the next council meeting, and I promise, if you allow me to do this, you won't be disappointed. Thank you very much for your time.
That's all the speaker sheets that I have at this time.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar.
Let me read it?
Yep.
We have five items on the consent calendar. Number one, the minutes of the regular and special meetings of February 1st, 2011. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, a word of bid for A Street and Lincoln Way flashing crosswalk program, CIP number 50E. Number four, wastewater treatment plant, Roman Catholic bishop property lease. And number five, resolution making certain findings related to the redevelopment agency of the city of Galt regarding payment of the 2011 supplemental educational revenue augmentation funds pursuant to Health and Safety Code, Section 3368.0.5 and 33691.
Is there a motion to approve?
No, to approve.
Second.
I think we need a roll call vote, please.
Ladies, Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Consent calendar has been approved, and we will move on to scheduled matters.
First one, solar power purchase agreement, lease and performance guarantee agreement at the Galt wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, council. City council and staff have both wanted to install renewable solar...
Uh, city council and staff have both wanted to install renewable solar energy, uh, at a local city facility for a number of years now, but different options we've looked at over the years have just not proved to be financially feasible until now. Um, staff is pleased to come before you tonight with a final project that has been several months in the making. Uh, it started back in September, yeah, if you recall, city council authorized us to analyze the feasibility of entering into a solar power purchase agreement, uh, to provide solar power at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, Glenn Grant, who is in the audience behind me with, uh, MWH Consulting, assisted staff greatly in that effort. Uh, he then drafted the request for proposals to undertake the project, and has provided much assistance during the most recent proposal evaluation and negotiation process. Uh, he will also continue to assist us during the design and installation of the actual solar project if it is approved. Uh, as a, just a brief reminder, and for the benefit of the public, a power purchase agreement, or a PPA, is simply an agreement between a private company, in this case, Solarstar Twelve LLC, uh, that specializes in constructing and operating solar power facilities, and a purchaser, in this case, the city of Galt, who wants to buy that solar electricity at a negotiated rate over a period of time, which is typically twenty years. Uh, the solar provider gets to take advantage of various financial and tax incentives that are available, that are not available to government agencies. Uh, in addition, they receive direct guaranteed payment for power that they generate at that facility. Uh, in exchange, the city gets to negotiate a cost for energy that is less than projected smud rates over that same period of time, and they don't depend on the peak and super peak hours that smud has various rates for. Uh, it also provides a way for the city to meet its environmental goals, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and promote renewable energy. Um, it costs the city nothing to construct, operate, or maintain, we simply pay the solar provider for the power that we use at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, there are three separate agreements that we need to implement this project, and they are all before you tonight. First one is the lease. Uh, the solar provider will lease about five and a half acres of property on the wastewater treatment plant grounds. Uh, the negotiated rate is twenty-two dollars per acre per year. Uh, the property is known as Holding Pond Number Two out at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, it's just northeast of the capital facilities that are out there, um, where the operator's office is. Some minor fill will be placed on the floor of the basin just to elevate the panels above the base flood elevation, and also to provide some positive drainage, um, so that the, it won't be in standing water. Um, otherwise, the panels will still be installed below grade of the surrounding area. The meat and potatoes of this project is the power purchase agreement between the city of Galt and Solarstar Twelve LLC, which is the financial entity that will own the facility. There's then a separate agreement between Solarstar and Sun Power for the construction of ongoing O and M services. Uh, in the PPA, the city will be agreeing to purchase two million kilowatt-hours of electricity per year for the next twenty years. Uh, this two million figure is a conservative estimate that we did in the feasibility report of the electricity demand of all these new treatment facilities that are out at the wastewater treatment plant for tertiary filtration and UV disinfection. It also assumes current flows, so it didn't include any growth that we anticipate, and it assumes six full months of irrigation during the year, um, during which the water does not go through that additional treatment process. So it's a very conservative two million estimate. There is a provision in the PPA that we've negotiated where the city has ninety days from execution, in which we can opt to go for a slightly larger system. The idea behind that was, we don't have enough history of electricity usage out there with the new facilities in operation, so we, this gives us a couple of months to see what the electricity bills come in at. We can then opt to purchase up to two point two five million kilowatt-hours, and then the re- the rate per kilowatt-hour actually comes down a little bit, so it's more savings. Um, the way we have structured the recommendation is that you would allow the city manager to make that decision within the ninety days. For purposes of figuring out the value of this project, the city of Galt, uh, staff and our consultant estimated the cost of electricity over the next twenty years in current dollars based on existing flows. Uh, that number represents the net present value, or NPV, of the system. If we continued to buy electricity from smud for the next twenty years, we would pay an estimated five million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for that energy use. This assumes that smud rates would increase, on average, three percent a year, which is actually less than what they've historically increased at. Uh, for comparison, the estimated net present value of just the two million kilowatt-hour system is only about four point one million dollars over twenty years. So we're saving, and it's only about three point seven million if we go with even, even larger, two point two five system. Um, it would save one million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars for the smaller system, or about one point seven million for the larger system over twenty years. Uh, there are a few main component, components of the PPA that council should be aware of. Um, first, there are a number of what we call conditions precedent. There are a number of circumstances under which the solar provider and/or the city have the option to either renegotiate or not proceed with the project. Um, part of that is, it could include failure to obtain CECL compliance, which the city would have to grant, or if they encounter unexpected site conditions that would materially affect the construction costs out there, and the city, and the city would not be willing to renegotiate. We do not anticipate those problems, but just want the council to be aware that that is a possibility. Um, because of the fact that the, that city has approval authority over the CECL document, um, there is a provision that if they get to that point and CECL is not approved, that some, that the Solarstar could recover costs up to seventy-five thousand dollars for work that they performed on that CECL analysis. Uh, another component of the PPA is the purchase option and termination values. Uh, the term is twenty years, but the city has the option to purchase the system at year ten and year fifteen, um, if we wanted to take over operation and own that system ourselves. In that event, we would need to pay either the larger of the fair market value, or the termination values that are noted in Schedule Three, Column B of all the attachments, um, and that would depend on whichever system size the city chooses as well. If we wait until the end of the twenty-year term, the city has three options. We can either extend it for another five years at a negotiated rate, uh, we can purchase it at fair market value, or we can require the owner to remove the system and return the site to its original condition. Uh, if the solar provider breaches the agreement prior to the end of the term, uh, the PPA says that the ci- they must pay the city the difference between the smud rates at the time and what the city would have paid for solar electricity for the remaining term of the agreement. Uh, were the city to breach, uh, it must pay the penalty termination values in Schedule Three, Column A, and allow the solar provider to enter on the site and remove the system. Um, lastly, data monitoring. Uh, there will be an online monitoring of the system performance that will be linked directly to the city's website, uh, and shows citizens various data about the system, including energy production, uh, and a number of environmental parameters. Kevin Ross with Sun Power to my right will go over those in a little more detail on a short PowerPoint, uh, when I've completed the staff report. The last of the three agreements tonight is the performance guarantee agreement. Um, because energy savings with this project is so important to the city, we wanted just sort of an additional level of guarantee, so we can maximize the amount of energy we can purchase, um, and, and maintain it over the twenty years. However, the city's really best protection is just the economic incentive to the developer, um, to pay off the cost of the system and make a profit for their investors. Nonetheless, they did offer this agreement, basically says the city will be paid the difference in energy costs if the system doesn't generate its guaranteed energy output as adjusted for weather conditions, and we're paying a whopping dollar for this agreement, and, uh, it's, so the term is for ten years, which is fairly standard in the industry. Uh, the fiscal impact, I've detailed pretty thoroughly in the staff report, so I'll just summarize real quickly. If we just assume the minimum two million kilowatt-hour system, the estimated energy cost savings over twenty years is about one point three million dollars, plus revenue to the city from the ground lease over twenty years would be about, uh, twenty-four hundred dollars. So the total revenue savings would be one million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Um, to be fair, there were some consultant costs with MWH, uh, that are about eighty-seven thousand, five hundred to get us to this point, and, uh, there was a substantial staff time with the city attorney, public work staff, uh, myself and the city manager. Not counting the city manager's time, we've estimated about, little under twenty-four thousand dollars in staff costs. So, we come out with sort of a net of, of little over one point two million if you take all those costs out. Um, in closing, we note that the project is consistent with a number of goals in the Galt General Plan about promoting and utilizing renewable energy. Um, CECL compliance will be required prior to initiation of any construction activities at the site, so that will be occurring in the next few months. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, Kevin Ross with, uh, Sun Power Corporation, who prepared the proposal for this project this year, and he's got a PowerPoint with all the pretty pictures and bells and whistles that shows you kinda what the system looks like and what the web link would look like.
Thank you, Sandy. I think at this point, we need to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to ask or address the issue?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Come on up.
Al Baldwin, I am one of the concerned citizens of Galt, this wonderful city of character, and I wasn't going to come up on this one, but there was some questions that, uh, let's assume you approve it tonight, or you're going to maybe. I would, I would urge you to ask more questions, maybe, and maybe they'll be answered with the PowerPoint. What's the extended life of solar panels now? Is it twenty years? If it is, or approximately, why would you wanna buy it after twenty years? The, the, uh, the other question was, uh, you, I know a million dollars is a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but are you gonna put this on five acres? Did I hear that right? Was it five acres? Well, I brought this up maybe two years ago about a solar farm, and the, the thing I got back on it was, well, the consumer preserve would be against it because it would disrupt the, the environment in some way with these solar panels, and I'm sure you probably looked into that, because you wouldn't approve something like this if you had the preserve ready to come back at you, and you'd be extending this for a length of time. Of course, maybe the PowerPoint's gonna prove that, hey, the preserve's all for this. If that's the case, that'd be great, because there's a lot of property around that area that you could put your own solar panels in and make a fortune for the city, 'cause you, you'd be saving the city a lot of money. So if it works there, can we put it somewhere else? I'm an advocate of solar, uh, farms, if, if possible, it's in an area where it won't disturb anything. I mean, they're great, but twenty years, unless they come up with something new where they go maybe thirty or forty years, I'm not too sure the upkeep on the panels are gonna be, and who pays for that? It's gonna be worth it. So there's some questions that are gonna come up, and I know you're gonna see a PowerPoint and there's things you wanna discuss, but, um, I, I'm not too sure. It looks great on the outside, just dig down a little deeper, that's all I'm suggesting, because the city, uh, would really need something like this if it's feasible, and if it's great, but, uh, I wouldn't suggest jumping into cold water right now until you know what you're going, doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Oh, are there any other comments at this time? If not, we will close the public hearing.
Um, oh, just a, yeah, keep it, you can open it again.
Okay. I'm reopening the public hearing.
That's your consultant.
Okay. The consultants are gonna speak?
Well, I think, uh, our attorney will.
Help me out here.
Um, I think that, uh, Mr. Ross from Sun Power has prepared a short PowerPoint presentation that we ought to, uh, perceive as part of the public hearing.
Staff report. Thank you.
I wouldn't comment.
Just, can everyone hear me?
Sound good.
Well, good evening. Uh, I wanna thank council for allowing the opportunity to, uh, have a brief, um, overview of this project, and, uh, hopefully, it'll, uh, promote some, some additional questions if there are concerns. Uh, Sun Power, uh, was chosen by the city, uh, through an RFP process, um, as the developer of choice for, um, pursuing a, um, a power purchase agreement, um, one megawatt solar project for, uh, the city of Galt at the wastewater treatment plant, as previously mentioned. I was asked to put together a few slides just to overview the, the qualifications of Sun Power, who we are, what we do, um, so that the city would have some comfort about, um, who they're actually dealing with, uh, under the PPA structure, and, um, then also some, um, information about the project specifically, and finally, uh, a few examples of what the performance monitoring data would look like, um, uh, for city, uh, and public review. So Sun Power is a, um, a, a global manufacturer of high-efficiency equipment, uh, solar cells and solar modules. Um, we are, you're, uh, very unique in the industry in that, in addition to being a manufacturer, we're also a, an engineering firm, a developer, a contractor, and a design, build, installer, and financier for large commercial projects. The company is broken up into, um, individual business units that represent certain market sectors globally. I belong to the commercial sector. My primary role with the company is to develop commercial, uh, large-scale projects for water treatment and wastewater treatment facilities in the, in the western US, primarily in California. Um, as you can see, we have, um, a substantial, um, headcount and, uh, and offices and factories around the world. Uh, our products are, um, broken up basically into two classes. Uh, in addition to building, uh, developing and manufacturing solar cells and solar modules, we also manufacture our own mounting systems for rooftop solar projects, as well as ground-based, uh, projects which fall into two subgroups of trackers. The T-Zero tracker, uh, that you see there, uh, in the, uh, lower left-hand corner, um, is the product that we're, uh, selected for this particular project. So the, um, the interesting thing about the high-efficiency cells is it allows, um, a higher energy density, uh, for a given unit of area, or for, uh, an installed, uh, wattage or capacity of, of installation. Uh, this is important relative to your project, because the amount of acreage in, uh, the, the pond or the basin where this, uh, project is gonna go is, we would consider, I think most, um, most of the players in the industry would consider it space-constrained, so by using the high-efficiency modules with a tracking system, we, the city will get maximum value, uh, and that's reflected in a, in a, a, a PPA price that is below the current cost of energy. This is sort of an example of, of how that, uh, looks as compared to other technologies that exist in the marketplace today. Uh, the, uh, high-efficiency technology you see there on the right, or, excuse me, on the left, is a, um, uh, a, a much smaller amount of, of acreage used for a given power plant. This is actually a five-megawatt power plant, uh, that we built about five years ago in Europe, um, and then represented, um, our other technologies there, and, and the amount of space required for those technologies. So in brief, uh, this is my last slide on Sun Power. Um, there's a significant amount of, of, um, experience and qualifications, um, both specific to the California, uh, commercial solar market, as well as the rest of the US and around the world. Uh, we are the number, a market share leader, number one, uh, market share in commercial projects here in California, um, and also in residential, uh, projects through our distribution channels. We also, uh, have a position, as I mentioned, to deal with utility-scale projects, and we happen to own a number-one share in that market as well. So, uh, as a summary, uh, you can see there for yourself the, um, uh, the, the, uh, basic, um, qualifications and, uh, functions that we offer in this vertical integration from raw materials through, um, project, uh, design, build, and financing. This chart just shows the, uh, our current ownership in the California Solar Initiative projects. This is data from, uh, the, uh, the CSI website. This is a list of other water agencies and wastewater agencies that, um, we've built projects for. Um, the list is actually longer than this, this is about a year-old, uh, data, uh, but a substantial amount of, uh, California, uh, water agencies. Many of them are Association of California Water Agency members, which is a, a trade association that we, uh, um, provide project feasibility for. So, um, on to the project, the specific projects, um, that, uh, Sandy delineated in the, in the presentation earlier about the PPA. Um, we're, once again, proposing to use the Sun Power T-Zero We're once again proposing to use the Sun Power T zero tracker. This is a, what's known as a horizontal tracker in the industry. It tracks the sun during the day from east to west. It has an onboard motor controller drive system. It basically operates like a giant Venetian blind, if you will, moving all of the modules in sequence under a single motor controller drive train, if you will, that moves all of the rows of solar panels together during the day. And that's the additional energy production that you see in the, in the energy output for this particular technology. About 25 to 26% greater energy output than a similar system that would be installed, fixed, not tracking of a similar or exact capacity, so roughly around one megawatt. As you can see, the energy production is tailored based on capacity and land use to the target the city had in mind of 2 million KWH on an annual basis. I've also included a couple of notes on the carbon offset in terms of the value of the carbon offset for 2 million KWH per year. It's a sizable amount of metric tons of carbon offset. The system will produce the equivalent energy of powering 174 homes on an annual basis. The PPA prices and the terms of the PPA are in the PPA agreements and associated site leasing, the Power Performance Guarantee document. For reference, the current smud TOU rate that I don't believe the water agent, the wastewater treatment plant is currently on, but well shortly beyond, is expected to be on average around a little over 10 cents. So you can see there's a pretty substantial delta between the seller energy cost and the term of use rate scheduled for smud. The term, as Sandy mentioned, is 20 years. There was a question about system life. The system will be designed for a 30-year-plus life period. The solar modules themselves come from Sun Power with a 25-year degradation warranty. So there's actually a, beyond the term of the agreement, there's an additional five years of warranted power production in the form of the photovoltaic modules themselves. So there's, assuming that the system, assuming that the city decides to purchase a system either through their prior to end-of-term buyout options or end-of-term, this asset will continue to produce energy for many, many years to come. This is a 2D plane layout of what it would look like in the, this is to scale, in the pond number two basin. There's three separate rows. Each one will have its own motor controller system. The small rectangle over to the left-hand side of the pond indicates where the inverters that'll convert DC energy into 480 volt AC energy will reside. That will then be run back to the main electrical panel for the site. This is the construction schedule, which allows due diligence that occurs up to the Sequel approval. The actual construction will take about four months. These are pictures of the same exact technology that we're proposing, the T zero mounting system and Sun Power modules. The system is actually at a wastewater treatment plant that's owned by the City of Thousand Oaks. Another similar system, this one's larger than yours, but, and takes up a little bit more acreage, at the Sonoma County Water Agency, Lake County Sanitation District. They actually have a much larger system, this is only one part of it. This same technology is used in the elevated cache and over parking lots as well, so we can install tracking systems up in the air, providing that same high level of energy above and beyond a fixed tilt canopy and provide shading for parking lots. This is city Hayward. So moving on to some examples of what the public might see through a web link to real-time data that's connected to our data acquisition system at the site. This is a web link that we manage all of the data streams through a cellular modem to a silver farm in Richmond, and just put up on a website called sunpowermonitor.com. We will allow that to be linked to the city's website. That integration will basically allow people to see these slides, or slides that would be indicative of the actual attributes and energy generation for the site. There's also a section that provides environmental attributes and benefits. This is the carbon footprint type data, in other words, the amount of toxic air effluence that are offset by using solar energy as a 100% renewable energy source, taking away from corresponding energy generation that would be in smud generation inventory. There's also an educational component to the standard offering of the monitoring system that the public might be interested in to understand better how solar works. It's an animated set of slides. This is just one of a series of, I believe, four or five slides that shows how solar works to generate energy. And that concludes the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Okay, we're still in public hearing, so if you wanted to come up, Woody, and make a comment, please do.
Yeah, I just want to say Al hit a nail on the head. My house is over a million dollars. Eighteen years ago, we had that solar put up, and we've already repaired it, me and my neighbor. And they kept saying that was a defect, it was a fault of the sun on the pipes and stuff. So we just got it all repaired, so that's what you got to watch.
Okay.
It cost me a lot of money.
Thank you for the information. Anybody else from the public wishes to speak? I think we can close the public hearing now and get council comments. And before we do, I would say something to Al. We've had this information, this study, that answers some of the questions that you brought up, so it's not like we'd be making a decision just on what we heard tonight. Don't want you worrying, Al. Okay. All right. Okay, council members. No questions?
Who's going to speak up, Al? I got something.
All right. Let's start with you.
Sandy, we talked about this before. What are the possibilities of expanding it as far as later on down the line?
You're referring to the option to go to the 2.25?
Correct.
Yeah, within 90 days, the city has the option, from the time we execute the lease or the PPA, to choose to go to a slightly larger system. That's kind of the maxed-out, under the one-megawatt limit on a lot of the financial incentives. So 1.25 kilowatt-hours is about as high as we can, we can go.
Okay.
And we have, under the staff report, we're asking the authorized city manager, once we've had an opportunity to look at some of the electricity bills at the wastewater treatment plant with the new UV disinfection operational, and see how close our projections were, then he would be able to make that decision. There's three size options under the staff report that they can go with.
I have a couple of questions.
Thanks, Councilman Singleton.
Maybe I missed it. What is the estimated savings to the city and our citizens? Was that in here, or I just missed it, or didn't look closely enough? In the, I mean, is it going to be an immediate, it will be obviously immediate savings, but I want to be able to let citizens know what they're saving per, say, per year on the system.
Got your calculator? I'll just divide 1.3 million by.
The total, the total over 20 years was about 1.3 million if you put the smaller size?
Okay.
So you want to divide that by 20.
All right. I'm asking for a little much, I guess, so let me, let me do this.
50,000.
Pardon me?
Yeah. According to Greg, it's about 50,000 a year.
That was a good question. That's a good.
Thank you.
Sure.
My next question is, with the road to the city, will we be able to expand those solar panels, and what will the cost be to the city at that time? Let's say we go from right now 24,000, and we jump up to 30,000 people, and we start obviously getting more rooftops and more waste going through the treatment plant. What, are we, can we expand on that? And what would the estimated cost of that be to add panels to? I mean, I know it's hard to project that, but I just need a rough guess, and I don't need exact numbers.
Under this PPA, we cannot extend any further.
Okay.
All of the financial incentives right now are set up that a one-megawatt system is sort of the perfect storm to get the maximum, to make it most economically feasible for solar providers to do these projects. So that's kind of the limitations, the smud incentives, the tax benefits, all those sorts of things. A one-megawatt system gets your maximum benefit. Beyond that, it's not worth it as much for them.
Okay, so that's for the 3 million gallons that we do a day through the wastewater treatment plant, is that correct?
Right. That's the current capacity limit.
Right. Okay.
Doesn't mean if the city has a good experience with solar that we couldn't look at it for other city facilities, or do a different project at the wastewater treatment plant, but under.
Well, it's kind of essentially what I was asking, is if we, maybe necessarily add on to that, at that site, but in another site possibly, what would the, it would be around the same cost, I guess it's going to be the same site, I would assume. I would like to go to the maintenance on these. Who's going to clean these panels, and what's it going to cost us?
Kevin over here is.
You're going to clean them?
Yeah, the, under the PPA, the city does not own these facilities, we do not operate or maintain them. That is all part of the SolarStar's responsibilities.
Okay, so it will be then up to you to, is there any special way, just out of my curiosity, is that something that is done on a weekly or monthly basis? How is that, how is that taken care of?
Yeah, it's a good question. Basically, what happens is the site lease agreement allows easement rights for us to come onto the site to do regular maintenance. So there's, there's some preventive maintenance and testing that's done for the inverters, for example, because they are a piece of electronic gear that needs to be looked at on a, at least twice-a-year basis. And then the panels, I think we've included at least one annual cleaning. In this part of the world, Mother Nature does a pretty good job with the rains for cleaning the panels, but we do come in and clean them in the summertime because of dust buildup, and especially if there's any construction activities that are taking place in and around the basin where the modules are going to be, they should be cleaned. I should note that also the, the energy production numbers that Sandy alluded to them being conservative, part of that conservatism includes modeling the energy output under a soiled condition. So we assume a certain film of dirt, if you will, on the modules as real-life conditions, and then we endeavor to improve that by washing them once annually, in addition to the regular maintenance activities that occur.
I would also point out that part of Sun Power's system is they have alarms, they're connected to their monitoring facility in Richmond, so if the energy production drops drastically, that's going to be shown on their monitoring facility, and then they could send somebody out to either.
So we're going to have to wait, wait until somebody comes over from Richmond to take care of some emergency, something going on?
Yeah, we felt Richmond's actually, it was pretty close for, for maintenance purposes.
Have you run that traffic in the, okay. Just asking.
I just did.
Yeah, but you're running late, I mean, late traffic. Okay, now, along with that maintenance, is that also when they're cleaning those panels or, you know, however you're going to do it? As Woody mentioned, is that, is there a way to keep an eye on our lines that go into the plant, make sure we have no shortings, or any possibility of problems with those going into the plant? I mean, along with the maintenance, are they going to regularly check the pipes and the lines and all the stuff that goes into the building there? How is that monitored? It's my question, I guess.
The, the monitoring system, there's a data acquisition system that actually is connected to a number of different sensors on the system. And the, the arrays that were shown in the, in the layout in the PowerPoint presentation are grouped by strings of modules that connect in what's known as a DC string to a combiner box, that, it's like a giant junction box.
Sure.
That has the ability to sense for whether there's energy flowing through that circuit. If that circuit were to go down, for example, if the modules were to be broken, or the wiring severed or something, that information as a, as an error or as a problem flows back to the monitoring system.
If something should happen with those panels, I'm assuming that we'd have to bind more energy from smud, then that's when we would be increasing our rates at that time soon. In your presentation on page five, number three, under the purchase options and termination values, what, what's the termination value, the fair market value, termination, I'm sorry, termination value? And Schedule III, and that was that column you had back here, was that column A or B? Oh, that was B. Is that gonna, what is column B for? I got column A, but is the B for if you, if you got.
Column B is if the city decides at either the 10-year or the 15-year point that we wish to buy the system and take over operations and maintenance, we would then either pay the fair market value that would be determined by an appraisal, or the figure that's noted in column B, whichever is the highest.
Now, of course, you know.
Yeah, it's Exhibit D, Schedule III. There's a lot of attachments, I apologize for that.
Hey, you numbered them. On that same, number three, it says here if the solar provider breaches the agreement prior to the end of the term, must pay the city, or pay the city the difference between the smud rates at the time, what, what the city would have paid for the electricity in remaining terms of the agreement. Can you elaborate a little bit on that for me?
The city was very concerned because we, we want to be able to lock in these cheap electricity rates so that our ratepayers will have those lower rates to pay over the term of the PPA. So what we negotiated into the PPA was if something happens and the solar provider breaches the agreement for whatever reason, they go, I can't even think of it, they just decide they don't want to do it anymore, that they would have to, and say we're 15 years into the process, they would then have to pay the city the difference between that 8.6 cents a kilowatt hour and whatever smud is charging us at that time, for the rest of the term of the agreement.
Mr. Singleton, while you're on this page, I just wanted to point out that, when you look at these termination values, basically this, this company is making a capital investment of about $7 million on this equipment, and the only way they recoup that investment is if these panels are up and running and they are selling us power. Because if they're not producing and we're not buying it, they're not going to recover that $7 million. So one of the great comforts that we have in this transaction is, beyond our contractual provisions, is they are highly motivated to keep this thing well-maintained and up to peak performance to recover this $7 million on behalf of their investors.
Sure. Well, the reason I'm asking these questions is because I know I'll get them from some of my constituents, and that way I want to be prepared to let them know what I, everything I can. and that way I wanna be prepared, uh, to let them know what I, everything I can about what's going on. So I'm sorry if I'm taking up a lot of your time, but it's something I need to know for my own person and, and people I have to answer to. So, uh, I, I'm not in a disagreement with this, I think it's a great thing, but I have to be prepared and that's why I came prepared with some questions for you, that's all. Uh, just one more, uh, let's see, it's, uh, page seven of, of seven there, uh... It says in addition to staff, originally estimated fourteen thousand six hundred in staff time associated with this process, hundred and twenty hours plus forty hours of returning time. Uh, the actual staff time was probably closer to a hundred and forty hours plus eight hours of returning time, which is twenty-three thousand seven hundred. What were the extra hours for? Just curiosity again.
When we did the original estimate, it was when we were, um, acquiring, uh, MWH to assist us in this process. Um, so we had to do a fiscal impact on that as a consultant contract and we also estimated staff time. Before we started this process, we'd never been through this before, so it was a wild guess.
Okay, okay. At least you're being honest, thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Um, after going through it, it's just because, I mean, you've, you've seen the extent of the PPA, it's, it's, it's a long process evaluating the proposals, we got six proposals, we had to go through them. Just a lot of, it took a lot of staff time to slog through everything.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, questions?
No, I'm good.
Questions? Are you ready to entertain a motion?
I don't think we can do that.
What's the petition?
I motion we go forward with this.
I'll second the motion.
Then we need a roll call vote?
Yes, and that's to adopt the resolution.
Correct.
Recommended action? Okay, Vice Mayor Powers?
Hi.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Cruz?
Hi.
Mayor Payne?
Hi.
Moving on to number two.
Utility service rates, two thousand eleven.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you very much, Sandy.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Uh, the next item for you is utility service rates adjustments for two thousand eleven. Uh, the recommendations that you, uh, conduct a public hearing. Following that hearing, we recommend that you tabulate any written protests. In the absence of a majority protest, we recommend that you approve the revised rate schedules for water, wastewater, stormwater, Tier Two, and solid waste services to be effective March first, two thousand eleven. And last, we, we recommend that you approve the increases or decreases in appropriations as included in the staff report. I have a PowerPoint presentation, it's a little longer than the one you just saw, but I will attempt to go through it as, as fast as I can. There's a lot of good information here, though, I think it's, it's good to be able to share.
Yeah, take your time.
Take your time.
Our enterprise funds, basically are solid waste, storm drainage, water, and wastewater. In our enterprise funds, we mean, we charge fees that provide for the services. There's no support to these funds from the general fund or other funds, they're, they're self-sustaining. When you think about utility rates, there's a whole slew of things that go into providing water or wastewater treatment, engineering, transmission, or collection of the, of the utility treatment, water and wastewater, we have pre-bolt, pumping, we have a number of, like, five pump stations for both water, wastewater and, uh, storm drainage. Disposal, maintenance, our street sweeping is paid for out of the storm grain fund. Uh, we have contract services, solid waste, and then we have reserves that we want to establish and maintain. And last, we have administrative costs. While staff certainly tries to contain the costs as best we can, these are a number of factors that we can't control relative to what's happening in the world around us. Unfortunately, right now, labor costs are a little bit lower, uh, but the last two, the federal and state requirements, both their fees and their new regulatory standards are increasingly hard, uh, for us to meet and are burdensome in terms of the costs that they add to our projects. Uh, we historically have done one of three different, uh, methods in adjusting rates. The first is annual inflationary adjustment, we typically use this for storm drainage, uh, utilities. Uh, the second one is a specific rate adjustment, historically we use this more for the water and wastewater utilities. And the last one is a negotiated contact rate. This is because we have a contact provider for our solid waste, we typically have used that one. Um, in two thousand four, the city began using the Western Urban Regional Area CPI for determination of the adjustments. We, we tracked the, the change in the CPI on a monthly basis from November two thousand nine to October two thousand ten, and we use that projecting forward. So that period last year, the CPI was a one percent increase. On a specific rate adjustment, whereas CPI is good for overall, general adjustments based on the economy and where things are moving, a specific rate adjustment allows us to look at estimated expenses and revenues of a particular utility fund. We can add cost changes for specific items, that's what we'll talk about later, about the arsenic improvements, as well as the general items. We can also be more selective in the capital improvements that we add into each individual program, be it water or wastewater. Uh, a couple of key elements relative to these enterprise funds. Uh, we believe each utility should stand on its own. We don't trade money from one fund to the next, we don't supplement it with the general fund. And in doing that, we have a number of our facilities have debt service. Uh, the wastewater fund now, we, we're still paying off the last plant's expansion, now we're getting ready to start paying off the upgrade. And so we have debt service, we have to maintain revenues for that, we need to maintain reserves, and we also make sure that we have adequate maintenance and capital improvement funds. And part of that has to come from the ratepayers. I'm gonna start off with solid waste. The city contracts with Cow Wasterecovery to provide disposal and collection of waste and recyclable materials. We made a, a negotiated contract with them in two thousand seven, and last through two thousand fourteen. That contract basically allows for what you see here, it's garbage, recycling, and yard waste, picked up a, a variety of schedules, additional carts available at, uh, no additional cost, and there's also semi-annual bulky waste, electronic waste, and household hazardous waste pickups included in that service. The contract with Cow Wasterecovery, uh, allows a couple of components for an annual rate increase or rate adjustment. If you recall, last year, we actually reduced, it'd be raised by one point eight five percent. The first is that is a reference rate index. And this is an index that basically covers the general operating cost to the provider. In this particular case, the RRI increase over the last period was basically two point six eight percent and it equates to fifty-one cents per household. When we talk about all the rates here, even though we bill on a bi-monthly basis, we're talking about a monthly charge, so you multiply these all by two to look at what the bill we see by the ratepayers. The other item that we look at is disposal cost. And these are increased costs to the provider due to where they then take the trash. They gotta do something with it, it can go to landfills and they then can change their rates. And so there's a three point one one percent increase in the North San Martin County landfill. As last year, we directed a change to another landfill and we reduced the cost. So that equates to another ten cents a month. So overall, we're recommending, um, that we council approve a sixty-one cent per month increase to the standard residential service. There are corresponding increases in service to commercial users as well. This shows a history of solid waste rates, starting back in two thousand three. Uh, the Cow Wasterecovery contract took over in two thousand seven. You can see we hadn't changed rates for a number of years since, and you can see what the rate increases have been for seven, eight, nine. As of last year, two thousand ten, we actually decreased rates, now we're actually gonna go back up, uh, a total combined two point seven one percent. Um, to the rate you see there, it's a sixty-one cent increase. This is a very dark slide. Um... I let my staff pick the colors. Um... I wanted to do that again. Looks better than the computer.
They're, they're sitting behind you, Greg.
I know they are. Tony's at home watching on TV.
Yeah.
Uh, but this, this is the first time we've done this kind of graph and I think it's demonstrative of the rates, particularly since two thousand eight, nine, ten going forward, while we have managed to, to try to stabilize the rates. And while in prior years there were some increases, uh, we've done a pretty good job of recent to, to stabilize and flatline those. Moving on to storm drainage, um, prior to two thousand three, we had a combined drainage and sewer rate that was all included into one. In two thousand three, we separated those into two separate utility funds. At that point, any existing account became a Tier One user. Uh, anything from, uh, March first, two thousand three, any new houses were built and any new property developed became a Tier Two. The Tier One rates were frozen back in two thousand three and have not changed. When we separated and created the new Tier Two rate, that was approved with an allowable annual inflationary, uh, cost increase. So for the proposed Tier Two going forward, we're recommending that one percent CPI increase, which equates to six percent, uh, six cents for every residential household. For Tier One, it would not change. This map shows you the areas, Tier Two is the green shaded area, so these are the areas, if you live here, your bill would go up by six cents a month for storm drainage. Entire rest of the city is Tier One. So this actually affects a relatively smaller portion of the city. Let's see if Mary Lou's figured out where she lives. Uh, again, with the, the summary of where we're at, where we've been, uh, starting two thousand three is when we first split the rates out, Tier One was two dollars and forty-three cents and has not changed in eight years. It will probably stay that until we can convince the ratepayers of the need for the additional services. Tier One is obviously not anywhere near the cost of services, uh, for storm drainage. Uh, our street sweeping costs typically eat up the majority of the fund, if not all of them, in, in this fund. Uh, we're recommending, again, for Tier Two, a six cent increase. Uh, again, two thousand ten, council actually decreased this fund by half a percent. And back in two thousand nine, they elected a less than CPI increase of three percent versus four point one. We've done a pretty good job, even the fee is very low itself, of still keeping the costs down. Again, the bottom green is Tier One and the top is, is Tier Two. These are similar rates, um, for multifamily, commercial. Again, all the Tier One, there's no change. And when Tier Two was, became effective, it was changed for multifamily and commercial. It's now based on acreage basis, so these costs would be going up by that same one percent as the rest of them, they're all proportionate. Most of the discussion tonight will focus on residential, um, but the, the adjustments are across the board, the same percentages for all users. Uh, now we come to the water rate, which has got the most attention, obviously. Our rate study is recommending a fifteen percent increase in rates. This is primarily due to the capital and O and M costs, uh, that we need relative to the mandated arsenic water treatment, uh, facilities that we've had to put in over the last couple of years. Also, there's been some, uh, deferred rate increases in prior years that now it's time, unfortunately, to make up for. Uh, staff is recommending a proposed fifteen percent increase, which is three dollars and forty-three cents per, uh, household. Uh, this would apply to all rates with the exception of some of our fixed cost rates, such as callouts, um, fire hydrant costs, uh, shut-offs, those are based on actual rate, uh, uses, or labor rates and those are going to be a one percent. I'm gonna digress briefly here and talk about, um, arsenic relative to the cost and also a lot of, of recent events. Uh, back in two thousand one, the EPA reduced the allowable arsenic limit, the maximum contamination limit, to, from fifty parts per billion, that's a billion with a B, which is about one drop in a Olympic-sized swimming pool, to get an, an idea of how much that is, to ten parts per billion. Uh, they originally gave us, I think it was five years to comply, and that was extended for the city through November two thousand eight. Uh, we started working back in two thousand three, two thousand four, I think we ordered our first project for arsenic improvements in two thousand five. So we've worked in diligently since in trying to, uh, improve our facilities to remove arsenic, but it's proven to be very difficult to do. It's very important to, to point out, though, that actual arsenic in the water did not increase. It wasn't all of a sudden that we had additional arsenic. Arsenic is a natural occurring element in the groundwater, we pump the wa- water through the ground and it picks up trace elements of arsenic when it comes back out. We typically vary from a low of four parts per billion to a high of about sixteen, depending upon which well you pump the water out of. It also varies during different times of the year and different, uh, times when you pump. Um, in December two thousand eight, we received our first notice from the CDPAs, the county health and the state health, that we were violating the arsenic standard. We then had, uh, thirty days to issue a notice, so we issued our first notice in December two thousand eight letting our customers know that our water was in excess of the arsenic limits, let them know what we're doing about that. At that time, we were blending our water, taking water from a well that was under and a well that was over and mixing them in the reservoir to the best of, best of our ability. The state basically said, "That's fine, however, we want you to get, uh, source stream at all of your wellheads." So we were in non-compliance until such time as we did that. Um, we've had to issue that same notice every quarter since February, uh, since December two thousand eight, so we just issued our tenth notice here, uh, last week. Uh, we've since completed arsenic improvements at three wells. And we'll talk a little more about the cost, so the typical water that we're producing after treatment is between four and eight parts per billion. So we've gone down from an average of just barely ten, twelve, fourteen, down just under at typically a sixth on an average. Um, the Golden Heights well is the last remaining well that we had that does not have treatment. Uh, we've talked with council, we've ordered projects, and we're coming back next meeting to award contracts to install a seventeen-hundred-foot deep well and a treatment plant. We hope to, where we're gonna reach an arsenic-free aquifer. And that's a better solution for the city than paying for the arsenic treatment. That well has been placed in standby as of, uh, January thirty-first, so as of that day, we are now legally in compliance with the arsenic standards. So we hope that the notice we just sent out, the first of February, which covers the first quarter, is the last that we'll have to do. Um, the high school and the elementary schools and businesses are responsible for sending out a secondary notice. So we send them a notice, they have ten days to then notify their parents or their students as business owners have to notify employees of the receiving the notice from the city. And that's what happened. Uh, there was a small snap through and our notices didn't go out with the utility bills. The, the school district saw the notice on our webpage, they sent out the secondary notices. Our notices went out about a week later in a separate mail-out. And then a parent got this notice, apparently had missed the prior notices since December two thousand eight, and that's then, the ruckus ensued and we've seen numerous phone calls, which for a significant amount of time, telling people, "This is what's going on, they're very concerned, they've all been very, uh, genuine in their call, they want answers, we've given them answers, and I think we're, we're seeing the tail end of that." But I want, like, "The water is safe, it's always been safe, and, and we're gonna start the project, uh, next meeting, to treat the last well." More about arsenic. Um, to date, we've spent about four point nine million dollars treating for arsenic. Today, and that includes the, uh, arsenic portion of the Golden Heights well that we're going to award. So by the time we're all done to bring us into compliance, it's been almost five million dollars. When we started this project, we budgeted about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. We thought it was gonna be an easy fit. It's true not to be that way. The annual cost increases going forward are about three hundred and ten thousand dollars. But by comparison tonight, the rate increase that staff is recommending is going to increase revenues by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a year. So almost all of that is going to pay for the increase in annual operations and maintenance costs due solely to the arsenic improvements. This, again, like the others, shows the rate history for two thousand three. Uh, we typically have followed CPI increases for the number of the early years since two thousand seven. We did take a, a large jump in two thousand eight, following the first, uh, rate study. Two thousand nine and two thousand ten, there were significantly lower rate increases. Uh, staff recommended seven point five and it was only approved a three percent increase due to the economy. Uh, two thousand ten, we actually, based on CPI, council approved lowering the rate a half a percent. The rate increase called for a nine percent increase. So we've been going the wrong direction with the rates. While it's good to lower the rates, these costs were still mounting. So that's why now, for the current year, we're recommending a fifteen percent increase. This equates to a three dollar and forty-three cent increase to the average, uh, ratepayer. And there, there are, again, a corresponding rate increases to other, you know, metered rates and to businesses. This shows, unlike some of the other graphs that were flattening out, this one shows a larger jump at the end. It starts to flatten out in the two thousand seven, eight, nine range, but now we're backed up and if we had just projected the straight-line rate, we'd probably get to about the same point. But we have managed to give a rate reduction to the ratepayers for the last two or three years, which is a good thing. Uh, these are the same rate adjustments, I'd say, even if you, whether you have a meter or a flat rate, there are the same proposed adjustments. Um, this is what it is for metered, for residential, multifamily, or commercial. multifamily, or commercial. Also, another diversion, the last council meeting, citizens asked questions about the water metering. And so I want to bring back a little update as what was happening there. In nineteen ninety, the city began collecting monies for installation of water meters. We currently have about one point seven million dollars available for installation of meters. In two thousand and four, the city actually began requiring developers to install water meters when they built their homes. We currently have about seven hundred and ten meters. That's a mix of residential and all the businesses in Galt currently are metered. We have about sixty, six hundred and sixty-four hundred meters left to be installed. Of those, about three thousand are post nineteen ninety-two, which is, that's basically the target that we were trying to do in the first phase of our water metering. Went to council a couple of years ago with the plan to try to be in compliance in spirit with assembly bills that required that if you had a meter installed, you had to actually charge by the meter by January first of two thousand and ten. A lot of cities put the meters in the ground years ago, but they never implemented a metering rate structure. The meters just sat there. They weren't being used. So we were, even though we weren't legally required to do that, we were trying to follow along with the spirit of the law and then get all of our services that were installed in that time period actually put in. We've had some delays relative to staffing issues and being busy with treatment plants and arsenic problems. And so the project is back on track now. We're going to take all post nineteen ninety-two meters. Mostly, again, have deposits already presented to the city. There's also some select infills. We're going to try to do whole neighborhood blocks and not only one or two houses. In the middle of forty houses, it doesn't have a meter. That's going to be the first phase. It's under design right now. We're going to go to bid for that in May. We anticipate starting installation in July, get them installed over a couple of months. And then we'll have a couple of, at least one, if not two, billing cycles where we can send out what I call for ten bills. We tell people, "Okay, if you were on the metered structure, here's what your bill would be." And that way, they could see, we're only charging the flat rate. And that will be over the summer months. We don't want to ding somebody right off the bat with the big bill during the summer. So we anticipate actually starting billing in January two thousand and ten with the bills for that. And for anybody in phase one, there's no additional cost to property owners for installation of the meters. This leaves then phase two. Council previously did not provide direction on the timing for phase two, so there's another twenty-seven hundred meters that must be done sometime between now and two thousand and twenty-five. Back, talking more about rates, this will give you an idea of where all of our water dollars go. This is for the current fiscal year of a total of four point two million dollars in expenditures. About forty-seven percent this year goes for capital expenditures. Administration is about ten percent. That's salaries and overhead. And then we have about forty-three percent going for maintenance and operation. So for the current year, we have a very large load in capital, which is represented by the Golden Heights project and the other arsenic capital projects. Going forward to next year, you can see a drastic change between the colors in the chart. Maintenance and operation takes the huger hit, or huger section, but we've also reduced the total expenditures by over two million dollars. The total here is only two point four million dollars. So the percents are significantly different, but the overall expenditure is also a lot less. We have a lot of capital, smaller capital. Capital's only nine percent of next year's budget. So this is the big slug that we're trying to get awarded this year to get that last well done. And then we're going to have to wait and take a breather and allow rates to stabilize and regenerate some capital to do further projects. Moving on to my favorite part, this is wastewater. This is the good part. For flat rates, again, two thousand and three moving forward, you show what the increases have been through the middle year. We did a lot of CPI increases. Two thousand and nine, again, we allowed the ratepayers a little bit of a buy. The rate study suggested we had a fourteen percent increase. Council only approved a three percent. At that point, we were starting, started the sanitary sewer management plan. We were deferring costs, which we knew exactly what that was going to be. Last year, they actually decreased rates by half a percent. And for the current year, staff is recommending no costs for the actual operations and maintenance portion of the wastewater fee. Some of our businesses are actually metered relative to the wastewater. Single-family homes are not, but the businesses actually pay either on the basis of their water used or they pay actually on sewer, sewage effluent that is metered. And so, again, these are no change for the current year. One of the first things I did when I became the director, unfortunately, was to implement the upgrade fund. And that started in two thousand and six at ten dollars a month for a single-family residential customer and prorated across the board for all customers. At that point in time, we were estimating that the increase in cost just to the upgrade project might be as high as fifty-four dollars a month. Then our rates were somewhere about twenty-two dollars. And so the cries of, "Oh, the rates are going to triple," are about the same thing that you're hearing now from customers of Sac Regional as they undergo their permit. We increased that in two thousand and seven to twenty-five dollars a month. Very pleased to say, we now estimate that twenty-one fifty-seven will be adequate for the remainder of this fee. This is primarily to pay the debt service on the revolving fund loan, also the increased operations and maintenance. There was already the intent that this fee would pay for the capital and the increased operations cost going forward for this project. This estimate also includes about a twenty percent contingency in increased operation and maintenance cost. So once we get the plan up, we know what the power bills are going to be. We just heard a good presentation. We're going to save fifty-five thousand dollars a year in energy costs. There's a good likelihood that this fee will come down in future years or certainly will be used to stave off future increases in future years. Here's a update of a slide. I think we showed you this a couple of meetings ago relative to discussion about the permit. At that point in time, the cost did not include administrative costs and a couple of projects going forward. But the total upgrade project cost are about twenty-three point three million dollars. What I've done is I've added about one and a half million dollars in administrative cost, that's staff costs, for the city to implement this program, this upgrade. Also includes a three hundred thousand dollars that council recently approved for the Five Rocky Communications Project. Also, one of the requirements of the revolving fund loan, the state says, "We have to put one point one million dollars, which is a year's worth of debt service, into a special reserve." And so that's additional money from the bank, but it has to be reserved for the full twenty years, and it's separate from all of our other reserves. So the total cost of the project to date is about, as well as we can estimate, is about twenty-three point three million dollars. Moving forward, we also, at the very bottom of the slide, see that we anticipate one point one million dollars in debt service and increased O and M is about seven hundred thousand. So the increased costs are about one point eight million dollars going forward. Again, this shows the history of the upgrade fee. It was started in two thousand and six, and we're recommending a negative thirteen point seven change or a decrease. And this is a three dollar and forty-six cent change. And it negates, basically, zeros out the increase in the water. Again, these are the various fee levels for the different uses. This shows, the green is the overall operation, the maintenance cost. Again, we kind of flattened that out. And then the orange shows, we started the upgrade fee in two thousand and six, shows the big jump from ten to twenty-five, how it was flatlined for four years, three years, and then now we're dropping it back down. Just like with water, we wanted to show you some idea of where your wastewater fees go. For the current year, we've got, again, seven point seven million dollars in capital improvements. Majority of this is the live local station in Forest Main. It does go a little bit of the upgraded project, but most of that was budgeted and is carried over from prior years. Two point one million dollars in operations, about a total of a ten point six million dollar budget for the current year. For eleven twelve, the budget dropped significantly. It was down to four point four million dollars. You can see the operation and maintenance, again, takes over the much bigger portion of the pie as we go forward. I apologize. I didn't know this slide did this until I got here tonight. So this is the current total cost that we have. This is, again, the percentage of the increases we've talked about. This is what the difference is. You can see that for tier-one, it's sixty-one cents, and for tier-two, it's sixty-seven cents, because the water and wastewater basically zero each other out. And so here's what our proposed maximum rates are. It's going up, again, sixty-one, sixty-seven cents. Overall history, again, now, this is basically combining all the other historical slides that you've seen. This shows how the rates have gone forward over the years, how we've got to the point where we're at. You can see from two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight forward, the overall rate has become relatively flat. And so we had some up and downs previously, but now we're hoping to go forward. Rate stabilization is something that we very much try to do and not, and avoid all the drastic ups and downs with the rates. It's better to just have a flat rate. People know they have to pay it. And if in some years that we collect a little bit more, it's going to be there the next year to offset a future rate increase. Again, these are enterprise funds. We can't divert extra money to the general fund or anything else. Overall total monthly utility bill, about forty-nine percent. This under half goes to wastewater. This is the regular operations and maintenance costs and the upgrade. They're typically usually really one fee. We separated them for transparency, but they really go for the operations and maintenance and improvements at the plant. Solid waste is about twenty-three percent. You can see how small storm drainage is in the overall fixture. And water is about twenty-six percent. This has remained fairly constant over the last several years. And this is, this is where it all comes down to what we've been trying to do over the last year. We've shown you this slide each year. The heavy bandit ones are Galt. Now, this chart, the farther you are to the bottom, the better. Of the ten compared to cities, Galt's is number two. You can see that Elk Grove is high as their total bills are, average bills are a hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. Again, these are monthly charges. This is not the bill you get every two months. We're down to a hundred and four to a hundred dollars. The only city that's, compared to city that's under us is West Sacramento, and they got such a sweetheart deal connecting to Regional. There's nowhere we're ever going to touch them. I also will point out that all of these, Elk Grove, Stockton, or not Stockton, Sacramento, Sacramento County, they all are going to connect to Regional. And they haven't done their upgrade yet. So these fees for them are going to go up significantly more. We've done ours. And so there's a big time factor here. I also do want to apologize in this, in the, you have a very similar chart in your agenda report, and unfortunately, it has two Davises. The lower Davis in your, the one in your agenda report is actually Sacramento County. These are the corrected numbers. And so we're very proud that we were able to, you know, we don't like to raise rates, even the sixty-one cents, but relatively speaking, I think we're doing a very good job of keeping the rates as low as we can, particularly comparing to what's happening elsewhere. We sent our notices in December two thousand and ten, informing people of this hearing tonight. Because of the very slight increase, we did not have a public meeting that we've had in other years. We've had a larger increase. Public notices in the Galt Herald and put a notice on the city's webpage. Tonight is the public hearing. The final rates are to be set by council tonight. The rates that we recommended in the agenda report are the maximum in terms of rates that increases that could be set by council. So the sixty-one cents, you cannot approve any rate increase higher than that for solid waste. You could certainly approve a rate lower than that. You could approve a larger reduction in the upgrade fee. You could approve a less than three dollar and forty-three cent increase in the water rates. However, if you have caution, if you do so, then that would affect the cost, our ability to deliver the service that we provide. We propose that these rates come effective March first, and they will show on the April two thousand and eleven billing. According to Prop. two eighteen, there's ability of the ratepayers to protest. Protest must be in writing. You need a simple majority protest of all the, all the ratepayers to block each increase. It can be done on each individual rate increase. They have to receive by the clerk prior to the hearing tonight. And if there is a successful protest, it will likely result in a reduction of services. The average majority for each of these other customers vary. There's about three to six hundred protests need to be received in order to come close to the simple majority to block the rate increase. At this point, that concludes my presentation. Again, our recommendations are that the council conduct a public hearing and solicit testimony relative to the proposed increases. You tabulate any written protest received. You approve the revised rates as presented for water, wastewater, solid waste, and storm drainage fees. And last, that you approve the increase and decrease in appropriations as outlined in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Greg. We all know how painful it is to have any kind of a increase in any kind of a rate, especially a utility rate, because you have no option to go shop elsewhere. And as you can see, the staff has put in a lot of time. I don't know if you could digest all the information that they went to the trouble to compile for you. This information is also available to you online or come by the city clerk's office if you want to study it further. We'd be happy to share all that information with you.
We can put it on the webpage tomorrow as well.
Thank you. So at this point, Greg, we're ready for a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is open. If there's anyone from the audience that would like to come up, now is the time to do it. Please state your name and, you know, the exercise.
Hello. My name is Sean Farmer. And, you know, sixty-one cents is probably not that big a deal. I mean, most people, they're complaining about this, probably could easily cut that out of their budget. But I was thinking, you know, we watched the solar thing before this, and it kind of made me, and then we started talking about this, and it kind of made me think out loud. It's, you know, we're doing things like with the wastewater treatment plant with the solar to try to save the city money, one point three million dollars. You know, I was thinking, well, you're looking to increase sixty-one cents. So if you figure the amount of rooftops in the city of Galt, basically, if, just for example, if that one point three was thrown back to the, to the tenant, to the citizens of Galt, you're basically looking at about a fifty-four cent a month savings. So that almost offsets that. So what I'm getting at here is that it seems like it would be great if the city council, just moving forward, you know, you guys and the next council after you, moving forward, can think about, you know, kind of think outside of the box about new ideas. Like, what about, you know, talking to companies like Solar and other to, I mean, there's no way we're going to get rid of solid waste. You know, we have a couple of garbage companies to pick from. I don't know if, you know, what their contracts, you know, the terms of our contracts are with them and if there's any negotiation there. I know Cal Waste does it now, but Waste Management, I know always there's a bidding process or whatever. But if, you know, we could think of ways to possibly decrease the impact of, on the citizens by other means, you know, like, for example, like I'm saying with the solar. I mean, if there's things we can do to help lower costs in other areas to offset the costs of the areas that there's no way we're going to change, that would be something we should consider doing. And I think, you know, citizen would be great. Obviously, there's lots of companies out there that would probably be willing, just like the solar company would, to come in and do things. And we can save another one point three million dollars somewhere else, pass that on to citizens, and then, you know, we wouldn't have to have increases. So just something to think about, you know, because you guys have got to think, you know, technology and towards the future. So that's what I'd say.
And I did want to mention that Mr. Akaraz is here tonight from Cal Waste. If you have any, any questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to come up. He's brought his staff with him. Woody?
First of all, I think Greg gave a beautiful report.
He did.
And so I say, pass it, because I have a lot of trust in him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? This is the time. Okay, so are we closing the public hearing before the tabulation?
Yes.
One last chance from the public. Public hearing is now closed. City Clerk, do you want to report on the tabulation of the protest?
Yes, I did. The city clerk's office received five letters of protest.
So we're ready for council comments or questions?
Hi, me first.
Okay.
I'm going to fall asleep when you start. Just kidding. I really want to thank you and your staff for all the hard work you've done. Jason took us all on a tour of the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. I never knew I could be so impressed by the wonderful job that you guys have been doing. If people knew how hard you worked to change those arsenic levels and to upgrade our plant, they would be so impressed, because we are eons ahead of the city of Sacramento. And it's just a great job that you guys have all done. it's just a great job that you guys have all done. And, you know, that goes to the point of when you take fifty B P, B V Ps and reduce it to ten, that's a big jump real quick. People don't understand that you have to hustle really bad. And for us to only have been four to sixteen all that time when it was fifty was quite impressive. So it took a lot of big bucks to fix what we had to fix, and so that's why I personally think that sixty-seven cents for all the millions of dollars we've spent, and if the citizens of Galt could go out and see that, they'd be truly impressed.
Maybe, maybe we should arrange that. Let them have a tour of the wastewater treatment plant. Councilman Singleton?
And the water, too, with the arsenic.
Hey, Greg. I, I express the same feelings. I think you guys did just an awesome job. And if you guys could see what we're dumping after the wastewater treatment plant treats, so it's got a treat, it's just, it's amazing. Could you touch a little bit on, on the old wells? Because I don't think you said too much about where the arsenic levels are at and where the new wells, how deep they're drilling, and also about, just real quick, you know, I hear all the time that our people are going, well, I always smoke chlorine on water. Well, it's not the fact that you have too much chlorine, it's actually the lack of. Would you be able to elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, first, I think you're speaking in regards to the, we call it Golden Heights Well. The existing well is the last one that is not having arsenic treatment facilities at that site. We installed the Monterey Bay Well, I think we bought it online last May, and that pumped raw water down to the Golden Heights Water Treatment Plant. Right now, the Monterey Bay is producing water that is below the arsenic limit. So we're using, actually utilizing that well, and we took the Golden Heights offline last October.
I was talking about the drilling depth.
Right. Part of the delay in getting this project moving forward was we discovered there's a deeper aquifer. Most of our wells go down about a thousand feet. We drilled a hole down near cost at that well site, seventeen hundred feet, and hit the aquifer there. And we've also discovered that at the Golden Heights site that has water that is either arsenic-free or well below the arsenic limit. But we're going, we are going down seventeen hundred feet. And so the, the actual well costs were significantly higher to install the well. It's about a million dollars to install the well. Pumping costs a little bit more, but we did a twenty-year life cycle analysis, and we're much better off cost-wise over twenty years to go down to the deeper well and provide water that's arsenic-free or, or low arsenic without requiring treatment than we are to take the existing well that has limited capacity. So we're going to get better quality water, and we're also going to get more water through increased capacity that will allow for additional growth. And for years, we've barely been ahead of the curve in terms of water production, and so we need to get a couple of wells in, in place that give us some additional capacity to give us a little bit of breathing room during the summer.
And the chlorine smell?
We do chlorinate the water. We actually chlorinate at as much lower level than what we could in terms of residual chlorine. Just occasionally, people smell the additional chlorine. We get a lot of calls, and usually there's very little correlation to what we're actually doing. We're, I believe, about a third of the allowable level of chlorine.
Well, my understanding was that usually when they have, they really smell the chlorine, it's the lack of chlorine in the water because the gas is more, as opposed to when we do have a balanced or more chlorine in the water, you're not going to smell it as clearly, I believe is what we're here.
Okay, unfortunately, I'm not familiar with that.
What are you with that?
I'll be happy to check with my-
He was over there.
My water experts and, and get back to council on that regard.
Well, listen, on, on behalf of myself, as a council member, I applaud you and your staff. Please pass that along for me. You've done a great job. You guys have done an awesome job. Thank you.
Councilman Singleton?
I'd just like to say the same thing. I think what he's referring to is Bo. Bo was very adamant about how he takes care of, took care of our water. He explained very thoroughly how he handled the arsenic system and how he took offense to the fact that even though the EPA dropped their levels, he was going to take it, take it lower than that. So you've got a real good employee there.
If you need for the record correct, that, that's a rev you're talking about.
Rev, sorry, rev.
Bo's wastewater, rev.
Bo's wastewater.
I've been making the same mistake for five years, so.
Tell Bo I got rid of the, got rid of the paint.
Okay, in the absence of a majority protest, I would ask the council if they would like anything, a motion?
Move to accept the-
I second.
And then we also have a second one to approve the increase and decrease in appropriations as satisfying.
Sub motion.
Second.
So, I'm sorry, I think there's, there was a motion made for-
Item number one.
For item number one and a separate motion on item two. I mean, you can combine it into one motion if the maker would accept that as an amendment.
Okay, I'll accept that as an amendment.
Yeah, there's two.
Okay. And now we've got one motion on the floor.
All right, so we call for the, roll call votes, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilman for Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman for Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
It is approved, and now we go to the regular calendar with the city treasurer's report.
And in his absence, I would ask for acceptance of his report.
Is there a motion to that? So move.
I agree.
And, and I would explain that the information is in our package. We're not just approving something that we haven't seen and studied. So we have a motion and a second. Seems to be roll call.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilman for Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman for Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Okay, moving along, city council office report. And back in January, the city council met with the department heads and came up with some three-year goals, and it's my job to report how well we're doing. So I'm going to make this as brief as possible. Don't have any PowerPoint. But one of our goals was to enhance economic development, and the recommendation was for the city council to put together a list of existing and new development policies intended to streamline, clarify the development review process. In other words, we're trying to make it easier for developers and builders to pull permits. The community development director has completed that, and it was presented to the council at the previous meeting. Let's see, also recommend to the redevelopment agency board for action of issuing redevelopment bonds by March fifteenth. We are on target for that. Another goal was to attract, develop, and retain quality staff. One of the things we're doing is determine the feasibility of interdepartmental job shadowing programs and make a presentation to the city manager for direction. We're on target with that. We should be reporting back on that by May first. Another goal that we're working on for improved financial stability and maintenance of reserves, develop a process for identifying programs and services that benefit individual users versus the community at large. All of the department heads are working on that, and they're on target. They have draft definitions that we will be reviewing. Increase community engagement. The chief of police committed to hold a town hall meeting in conjunction with the school districts regarding bullying, and we did have that meeting, and I believe it was very successful. It was completed on January twenty-sixth. Mayor Barbara Payne is supposed to be facilitating the Galt Herald to set up a community event calendar. We've been working very hard. I talked to Dave Herberger, and the calendar is starting to get filled up. Neighborhood Watch is participating as well as nonprofits. I will be talking with both the elementary school and the high school to get them on board, and we hope to link everybody up together so you can go to one place, find out what's going on in town, so you're not planning an event that's going to be in conflict with two or three others. Another thing that I'm working on is to facilitate a, it says a town hall meeting, but that's a little misleading. We're looking towards maybe the end of March, having a town meeting. We want everyone to have an opportunity to meet the new council members, the new commissions, planning commissions, parks and recs, and we are inviting both the elementary schools to participate, whom I already spoke with, and also the high school. We intend to have it on the east side. We're trying very hard to bring our community together, both the east and the west side, and it seems like we have most of the activities on the west side, with very few or very little attendance by the people on the east side. So we're going to go to them with a town hall meeting, give you a chance to speak to all your elected and appointed officials. The other thing, just a preview of coming attractions. We're going to have a business fair again on the east side at Community Park, and it's planned for Cinco de Mayo, May the fifth. And, you know, we want the people in Galt to know what businesses we have available to them. So again, if they don't come to us, we're going to go to them. Another goal we have is to provide services and facilities responsive to community needs. Most of this is under our public works director, who has given you a really good idea about how hard he works tonight. But by March first, he should have forward recommendations for contract awards, awards for the Golden Heights Well, which he talked about tonight. We should have a bid opening, or we did have a bid opening, on February the second, so we're moving along with that. The unmet transit needs, we've revised our date on that to come back April nineteenth. Is that correct? And we're looking forward to a ribbon cutting at Walker Park in June, coming up. So I think we are on schedule as a council and as a staff, so we will move on to the next item unless someone had some comments or questions on our goals. And the next item would be additional patrol to Estrelita and Liberty Ranch High School. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, ma'am. As you might remember, last meeting, I brought up the fact that Estrelita High School and Liberty Ranch High Schools are actually outside the city limits, and therefore, up to that point, we're being covered by, primarily by the sheriff's departments for any type of law enforcement services. I had the honor of meeting with Sheriff Jones along with the city manager and Chief Catalico, and we had a very open discussion with the, that was very constructive and very informative. As a result, staff will be working with the sheriff and his staff to reduce response times to both Estrelita and Liberty Ranch High Schools on all calls for service. Both agencies, the way I understand it, will be working together to make sure that this is accomplished, correct, sir? Thank you. At this time, no further, no further actions needs to be needed, or, excuse me, appears to be needed. If for some reason something comes up where it needs to be revisited, we can do so.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Cruz. I think even though our Liberty Ranch High School is on the other side of the road, which puts it in the county, we all know most of those students are Galt citizens, and we certainly want to be concerned about them. Moving along, citizens participation, we're going to the city manager's office, sorry. Citizens participation and police chief selection panel.
Good evening. This request is for each of the council members to appoint a citizen to participate in the selection panel for the police chief assessment center or interviews that will be held on Monday, March twenty-eighth. As you know, the city of Galt is actively recruiting for a new police chief. We have Paul Camara from Averyan Associates that has opened the recruitment and will actually be closing on this Friday, February eighteenth. A part of the process will be interview panels held on Monday, March twenty-eighth, and a part of the process, we want to bring community members into the panels, on the panels, along with other chiefs from neighboring agencies, and then possibly maybe a couple of staff members, so we'll have well-rounded panel members for our candidates. So tonight before you, we'd like for you to either appoint a community member tonight or we have an option that we would have the choices by February twenty-fifth. We ran an advertisement in the newspaper, Galt Herald, last Wednesday. We have about five letters of interest that I forwarded to the council for your review, and whenever you're ready, prior to February twenty-fifth, if you could just let me know who your selection will be. Do you have any questions?
Do we have them now? Do you want us to know?
Yes, I can take them now, or you can send an email to me, whatever your preference is.
Vice Mayor Powers, sounds like you're ready to go.
Oh, Leanne McFadden, I'm putting on the council committee.
Councilman Singleton, have you selected?
I would be selecting Dale Templeson.
Councilman Cruz?
Terry Cooley.
And I have selected Tony Laura, principal of Estrelita High School. So we're still, we'll be hearing from Randy, I guess. That's the only one that has not been selected.
Thank you, Paula.
Great, thank you. Okay, communications. Do we have any written communications? No? Okay, moving along. We are now going to adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Board members, Howard, here.
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton? No, I'm sorry, Shelton, Cruz, here. Payne is here. Any public comments? I do have a speaker's seat. Okay. Randy Hunwoodson?
Hunwoodson.
Hunwoodson. All right, I'm always like.
Randy Hunwoodson, in the city. The truth for thought on the redevelopment agency, I believe at the last meeting, there was talk of it, it's seventeen million dollars. Is that correct? Which is, simple math, approximately seven hundred and forty bucks a piece for every man, woman, child in the city of Galt, which we know they don't all pay taxes, so conservative estimates, half the people in town pay taxes, and which doubles that, about fifteen hundred dollars a piece. My point is that a little forethought thirty, forty years ago, when I moved to this town, the downtown area was a thriving business community down there. If the government would have taxed so much then, and overregulated so much then, you wouldn't need redevelopment downtown. The people that were in business would have kept their places up, would have stayed in business, would have created more jobs, unlike a government that can't create jobs. So as you move forward, it says, you know, keep that in mind, that, I don't know, in the words of Reagan, the government, the government's best governs least. That's all I got to say by now.
Randy, before you leave, I wanted to, you had given us some questions at the last council meeting regarding the constitution, and I, I want you to know that we, we do pay attention to what the citizens bring to us. Currently, the city clerk is looking at getting a framed constitution for our lobby out here to remind not just the council, but everybody how important the constitution is. I did answer your questions, but I didn't mail them, and the reason is I have office hours every day, and I felt like some of them weren't just simple answers that you were looking for, and so I would be happy, you know, for you to come in and, and discuss them.
Sure.
And that's, that's all I wanted to say.
I was going to say something else, and that, one else that slipped my mind.
It's because you're getting old.
Yes, I know about it. Tell me about it. That's led, it's gone.
Anyway, thank you for coming, and if you think about it, jump up again. Okay. Any other public comments?
No, not yet.
Okay, information and consent agenda. I'm sorry, Councilman Cruz, do you have any?
There are four items on the consent calendar. Number one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of February- Number one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of February 1st, 2011. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrant. Number three, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending December 2010. And the last one, a resolution making certain findings related to the redevelopment agency of the city of Galt regarding payment of the 2011 supplemental educational revenue augmentation funds pursuant to Health and Safety Code, Section 33680.5 and 33691.
Is there a motion to approve, or are there any questions?
A motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go call.
You made the motion against it.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
The next item is departmental. Do you want to read that?
Oddfellows Rehabilitation Grants and Loan Agreement, Third Amendment.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my pleasure to present this report to you tonight. Just a little bit of background, on October 22nd, 2008, the agency board approved a redevelopment grant and loan agreement with DNS Development, developer of the project, for the rehabilitation of the Oddfellows Building, which is also called the Brewster Building, located at 201 Fourth Street. That building has a tremendous history in this community, post office, community store, Oddfellows Lodge, a number of things, built in 1868. Unfortunately, it had fallen into a significant state of disrepair, had been vacant for a number of years, roof was collapsing and really in danger of being lost to this community forever. Fortunately, we had the developer step forward, purchase the property, and we were able to put together a package of loans and grants to allow that building to be restored. The mission or the goal of the redevelopment agency in restoring the building was twofold. One, to preserve this important historic structure in our community. Secondly, to attract a high-quality restaurant for our old town, and to have that building, as well as Galt Place, which is right down the road, serve as catalyst for future development and revitalization of our old town. As everybody knows, that part of town has been, you know, suffered from a high level of vacancies and other things. And so this, the thought process is that with some successful businesses, it will just encourage more additional investment and development opportunities in that area of town going forward. The previously approved agreement by the redevelopment agency included a grant for seismic retrofits, which are required, amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. That work has been completed, the retrofitting of the building has been completed. The agreement also included a rehabilitation loan to the developer in the amount of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, which would be forgiven after ten years if the owner meets certain property maintenance requirements and establishes the restaurant in there for a minimum of eight years. Final component of the agreement was a twenty-year loan at a three percent interest rate in the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would begin to be repaid twelve months following the opening of the restaurant. As many in the community hopefully have noticed, that building is, the renovation is nearing completion. It's looking fantastic. We were given a tour of it just a couple of weeks ago, and everybody's really excited to see the restaurants open. The developers have been successful in identifying a restaurant operator to come in and operate a restaurant on the first floor. And developer recently approached the redevelopment agency requesting additional financial assistance in order to complete the tenant improvements on the second floor. The original plan was to do the first floor, get the restaurant open, and then possibly come back and ask for additional assistance for the second floor at some point in the future. Within a year, possibly longer, depending on, you know, what type of restaurant operator you've got, and what the needs in the community were. Developer, in conjunction with the operator, have now determined that now is the best time to proceed with the second floor renovations for a couple of different reasons. One is, the, once the restaurant is open and operating, it will be very disruptive to have construction going on the second floor, as far as noise, dust, and other nuisance associated with that. The other thing is, the second floor space is contemplated to be, help that first floor business be successful. It will augment and enhance and provide the operator with some greater versatility to enhance their revenue and help make the entire operation more successful. What they have contemplated on the second floor, and actually, we have representative of the developer, as well as the operator here, and I'll let them explain a little bit more. But what they've indicated to us is that that second floor would be versatile, it would provide some overflow seating for the restaurant, some private party space, banquet space, there'd be an additional bar on the second floor, as well as some space for entertainment events, live music and other things of the sort, with an open floor plan to allow to bring in those types of venues and events for our community. The estimated construction cost of the second floor tenant improvements is four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. In addition to that, there'd be approximately up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in additional investment by the operator for furnishing, furnishings and equipment and other things of the sort. This third amendment to the existing agreement provides that the agency would loan the developer two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the cost of the improvements, which is approximately fifty-five percent of the total construction cost, not the entire investment, but just the construction cost. One half of this amount, so a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, would be similar to the existing loan, twenty years, three percent interest. The other half, the other hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would be similar to the other forgivable loan, with the same terms and conditions. So, all taken together with the latest proposed amendment to the agreement, which you would have is, three separate components. The first component is a three hundred and forty-two thousand seismic retrofit loan, which has already been granted. Total twenty-year loan at three percent interest of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and then an additional ten-year forgivable loan at five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Now, some of the things we've put into the agreement to guarantee or assure the city that its investment is protected, first is personal guarantees from the developers of the project. Secondly, there's no debt against the property, and the city is in first position with a deed of trust. So in the event of foreclosure or bankruptcy, then the property ownership would be retained by the city and the redevelopment agency. Additionally, one of the things we negotiated in the agreement was that the city would be allowed to utilize the second floor banquet space for different functions and meetings and so forth that the city may, which to conduct in the future, up to two times per month. City staff has evaluated the request and looked at the investment by the developer, looked at the funding gap in order to make the project work financially, and this is what is being recommended to you this evening. The proposed amendment does require supplemental appropriation, the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the redevelopment agency for the additional loan. There are currently insufficient funds in the redevelopment agency because of the payment we had to make to the state, but we are anticipating tax allocation bonds that will be issued approximately February 24th. And this agreement would not go forward unless and until we receive those funds through the bonds. And so there is a condition in the agreement that has that provision. So assuming that's successful, then this loan would move forward upon the redevelopment agency approval. The annual revenue that we would receive, that the redevelopment agency would receive from repayments of the loan, are approximately forty-eight thousand dollars a year. In addition, with the new restaurant, the property value of that facility would increase. And so we're estimating there'd be additional property taxes generated from the site, the amount of eighteen thousand dollars, and sales tax, the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. In addition, because of Measure R, there would be an additional Measure R payment of approximately nine thousand dollars. That concludes my report. Again, we do have representatives from DNS Development, the owners of the property, as well as the restaurants and facility operator that are here to speak to the council and answer any questions that the redevelopment agency might have about this project. And so if you'd like them to come up and say a few words about their project, I'm sure they're anxious to share some of this information with the redevelopment agency.
Yeah. You're very welcome, and thanks for sitting through all of the rest of the meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, and all city council, and really appreciate you give us the time. On December 1, I came here with Steve Labatia. I'm Steve, we are twenty-eight years partner, and actually, his daughter and my son work in our company. We do a lot of development in Sacramento, we did in Rancho Cordova. And right now, we do historical building at the thirty-two unit apartment in Sacramento, Maystone Cross from Auditorium. Last year, our project we did at the fourteen and R, and we got nomination for the best project of the year in the county of Sacramento. And because of the gentleman, he is our tenant over there, he has a restaurant bar. And I have all of our projects here, sorry, I'm not that much good on the computer, as my son is not, but you can look at the projects we have. And last December, when we came here, we explained about our God, we wanted to finish this project, and are hardening this project, and we believe this restaurant. The problem is, when we left here, and anytime I come visit, I come here, Jason, once a week, or once, twice a week sometimes, anytime I park my car, I say, oh God, what's gonna happen to our second floor? We didn't know is really the people are gonna be that much love that building. As soon as February 4th, when most of you came as a visitor outside, and I had a chance to talk to you guys, everybody looked like wanted this project get finished. Everybody asked me about the second floor, and I say, we don't have enough budget. After February 4th, I really had three, four, five meetings with Steve, and in the beginning of the twenty-eight years, I should say, this was one of our disagreements. And always I say, I want to finish this building. And he said, because we, really he is a little scared, was scared about the situation we have in, investments we have in here. Finally, after February 4th, you know, I told him, no, there is no way, because everybody asked me about this, should be something in this town, we don't know about it. And until the low die newspaper come out, and we find out, they called me and they said they're giving so many calls, and the people making reservation for banquet hall. And I say, there should be a banquet hall close to us, but it's not the fancy one we're gonna have. And we find out banquet hall, we make a banquet hall on technical, and lounge, and staging for music in the weekend. And this is the bar we want to put. And it's very high-ended. And we decided to go for it. And I called many times to Jason, I told him, this is our situation. If the building gets finished, first floor and later on, what's gonna happen when the customer coming in the opening? We tell them we don't have a family table for you, we don't have enough space for you. And that's gonna be embarrassing, and the people are not gonna come back. And I decided, you know, we go for budgeting, and many times, we really come back to the Jason, and finally, we got to this point. And I want Alex to explain to you what he gonna do on the second floor, and what his business is right now.
Good evening. I am Alex Oregony, I'm the operator, along with my business partners, at Brewster's Bar and Grill, which will be the name of our restaurant operation in Oddfellows Building. And as far as the second floor concept's concerned, you have a photo there that gives you not an exact idea of what we'll be doing, but, pardon me, more a vision of the style that we're after. And it's gonna be, I think, a very grand space, it's gonna be exquisitely well-built out, and a lot of, you know, plush decadent materials, I guess you could say. It will keep a lot of the same feel as the restaurant portion on the lower level, but some different color schemes and different woodwork, and, you know, heavy drapery and things of that nature. And really, our concept there is to have a versatile open space, so that, as Jason mentioned earlier, that we can accommodate you folks for meetings that you have, or the Chamber of Commerce, groups such as that, pardon me. Also, weddings, birthday parties, anniversary, you know, any kind of a special event that people may want to book a banquet space for. We want to have room up there for a stage and some live music, some entertainment. And the bar area, of course, toward the front of the building, will be a little bit different than the restaurant bar downstairs, more of a lounge feel to it, some older kind of antique furniture, things of that nature, little conversation areas. And I think it's gonna be, you know, beautiful space, and we're looking forward to it. As Dave mentioned, we actually have already had three wedding parties that have tried to book receptions there. And at this point, we're kind of letting them know, hey, we're not really sure when we're gonna be able to get that up and running for you. Leave us your information, we'll get back to you. But I'd love to be able to call them back and say, you know, your summer wedding is on, let's make it happen. And, yeah, we look forward to, you know, answering any questions or concerns you may have about it.
Mark?
I heard that.
I just started with Mark this time.
Actually, I was very impressed with the tour you gave us. I'm quite pleased with everything that's going on there. Thank you.
Councilman Singleton?
Of course. There you go.
Thought that was it?
No, I have something to add. Okay, for, this is a quarter million dollar loan on this building. I would like to know if you could tell me, because I only said it was gonna be plush, and like I said, I loved the tour, you guys know I did, because I stressed that when I was there. I think you guys are doing a beautiful job. But for a quarter million dollars, I'd like to know, what kind of stage are you gonna have up there? I mean, are you gonna do some sound insulation? Because if you're gonna have bands up there...
Absolutely.
I want to make sure that we are not gonna get complaints from neighbors, and I want to make sure that we have the proper insulation through the bricks, that kind of thing.
Well, and I'll answer that question in two parts. First, I would love to invite all of you to come and join us at Shady Lady. We have live music almost every night, usually seven nights a week, there's a rare exception. But if you make a trip on up and see the live music that we have there, you'll see that our style is more kind of an understated, you know, jazz, big band, some kind of folk rock style, but nothing too hardcore, loud, or obnoxious.
Well, like you mentioned, though, you've already gotten three requests for wedding parties, and we can't really tell them what bands to hire. So I want to make sure that we have proper insulation, because they may have a hard rock punk band, or whatever happens to be, you know.
Yes, I'm sure there will be some discussion in terms of, we have a restaurant operation downstairs as well, and we can't have, you know, too much disruption of that activity as well. But there will be some sound dampening. That was one of the things that we actually struggled with during the opening of Shady Lady.
Did you?
Being our first live music venue, and really, my first venture as an owner, I didn't understand the extent to which you have to be aware of that kind of a thing.
Yeah.
And I remember the first time that I bought some sound dampening drapes, to just cover a doorway that we had, and they cost more than my car. I was kind of blown away.
I've been in the entertainment industry for about twenty-five years, so I'm aware of the...
Yeah, you know, base traps, and dampening panels, and all that stuff, I mean, it adds up real quickly. You know, you can spend thirty thousand dollars on drapes and not even see them in the space practically.
Right.
But yeah, we will definitely be aware of that kind of thing. My stake in this is, quite frankly, at least financially, a little greater than I had anticipated upfront. And fortunately, having a, you know, reputation, or pardon me, a relationship with DNS Development, they've been willing to step up and kind of help us out a little bit on some of the finish work that normally a tenant would be asked to do. And really, my contribution financially so far has just been for furniture, fixtures, equipment. So a lot of those details, and the sound dampening, and, you know, bar equipment, audio, all that is expenses that I'm gonna be taking care of, and...
Well, that would be my question, you're gonna have a permanent mixer there and lights and all that stuff.
Oh yeah, there'll be a PA system and the whole, yeah, absolutely. There will be in-house audio equipment, not, you know, not just for the stage, but certainly, we want house sound throughout, and that's, as you saw, a rather large, open space with...
Yeah.
I don't know how tall the ceilings are, but I mean...
Yeah, pretty tall.
So, just the house...
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet, right there.
So setting aside the PA and stage equipment, just the house audio, I think, is already well of over eighteen thousand, so. It adds up quickly, it's kind of amazing, but...
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot, we do have a request from Al Baldwin to speak on this topic. Al, yes, no? Come forward.
Hey, hello, I'm Al Baldwin again. And you know, I always speak about character, and looking at this operation and hearing what Jason has to say, and looking at the representatives of this new restaurant, shall we say, character comes into it. Now, Galt has got character. And guess what now? We're gonna have a restaurant that has character, because it's been baked on three characters right here, and they've been doing it... right here, and they've been doing an excellent job, they've been very honest, I've seen some of their, uh, work that they've done, and it's just beautiful, it's not second-rate, it's top of the class. I, I tell you, it's, uh, you're getting it open with the public, Jason's been very open, and there's nothing behind the scenes going on, it's, it's just everything, it's, I would say like the perfect storm, only this is the perfect character for Galt, okay? So anyway, I, I would urge you to, to do whatever you have to do to get this going in Galt, I think it's a great, great thing that's going on. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I wanna tell you that I have very high hopes for this place, I think it's the anchor thing we need downtown to bump us up a little bit, I think it's just a beautiful place, you've done a wonderful job. Then to the Shady Lady, tasted the food, it's great, you guys are great hosts there, and I just think it's gonna be a big shot in the arm for our town, and I'm just really thrilled to be able to, uh, help you along with this endeavor.
I can't wait to actually just get in there and start operating. The buildout's a little too stressful up here, so...
And the patio's awesome, I can see a little quartet out on the patio on, on Sunday or something, it'd be awesome, really nice.
Yeah, it should be a lot of fun this summer.
Thank you.
That it? That's it? Well, I've been there, and it's wonderful, but I guess I'm gonna have to be the person that's gonna, um, be the wet, kind of the wet blanket on it. I, the, what bothers me about this, I guess, is the timing. We don't have our bond money, uh, we don't know what our interest rate's gonna be, we don't know what the rating is gonna be, um, I feel like we really need to focus on some parking issues down there as well. I believe that your restaurant will be, uh, successful enough where hopefully you will be able to do the, uh, second floor the way you want to, and, and I may be the only one that is worried about the future, but with the, what the government's doing to us, uh, with the redevelopment possibly taking that away, I'm hearing Obama talking about doing away with the block grants, I'm, I guess I'm just a little bit, um, conservative and cautious on that. I want that to happen, if, you know, if, if you had come to me maybe a little bit later after we know where we stand with especially our bonds, um, I might feel a little more optimistic. But I think you're gonna be successful regardless of what I say up here, and I hope you will, and I'll probably be your best customer. Um, but that, that's the concerns that I have. Um, so, is there any other discussion?
Okay, another comment.
Okay.
Um, and I wanna direct it at Jason, you said that we don't, we're not going forward if we don't have the money, obviously.
There's this contingent on that, so there's no risk that we would do this and then not get the money and then we'd be out anything, it's all loaded.
And I think the other thing that's really important is that it's halfway completed up there as it is, and, uh, we are in a slump, but when things start picking up, things are gonna start costing more money, and to close down the restaurant or to have a bunch of noise happening when things get a little better would be kinda detrimental to receiving any money, so I think that we need to take those things into consideration when we thought on this tonight.
Well, good, good points, and I certainly agree with you, I just, just old-fashioned, yes. But if there's no more comments, I think we're ready for, uh, motion, we have two actions on this, so what's your pleasure, folks? Nope, one action. Okay, we're gonna do it together.
For the second one, I have to say.
Is there two or one?
We can do it together, there's, um...
It's one action, two parts.
Oh, there you go.
I, I move that we, uh...
Just two, there's adoption of the, the resolution approving the agreement, and the other one's appropriation of funds.
Right.
Can we do it in one, no?
Okay, I move we do the resol, both parts of the resolution as one.
I've had a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, roll call, Al.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Confused, aye.
Mayor Payne?
No. But it has passed.
It has passed.
And without me, it has passed. So we will now adjourn from the redevelopment and reconvene to the regular meeting, city clerk's report.
Yes, as you recall, it was before you in December, um, with the committee appointments, and I'm back again, not to, this does not complete all of them, but, um, I'll be back before you with Measure R in about a month. But at this time, uh, we did solicit additional letters of interest, and, boy, I need my, um, what do you need? Um, and the first committee that I'm looking for is the Committee on Aging, there are three vacancies, we did receive two letters, so at this time I ask, um, Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Singleton to make an appointment.
Then I would say we need to wait for Councilman Singleton to return, so everybody take a deep breath.
We have one with us, how about that we'll go to the next one, Youth Committee? Um, I have two vacancies, and I need Councilmembers Cruz and Powers, uh, to make a selection, I do have two letters of interest, and you know what I didn't pass out?
No.
Uh, say that again, please, the Commission on Aging?
No, we're at the Youth Committee, we skipped the aging.
Okay.
We have two letters of interest, one from Valerie Van Horn and one from Renee Templeton, and the, um, councilmembers that need to make an appointment are Councilmember Cruz and Powers.
Well, I'll, I'll take Renee Templeton.
Who was the other subject?
Valerie Van Horn, who is actually, was on the committee.
Yeah.
She's got her letter. She's got her letter and they...
Put Valerie on there.
Okay.
She took...
And then, uh, we can go down to Historic Preservation, um, this selection is made by the entire city council, there are three positions open and three letters of interest.
No, we should wait till Mike gets that in, if it takes the entire... Could you, could somebody get Mike?
Or we can go...
Someone to quick start settling.
If Al doesn't work, we can summon Chief.
Okay. Okay, uh, Councilman Singleton has returned, so we're ready to move on.
Um, let's go back to the Committee on Aging, at this time I'm looking for selections from Councilmembers Cruz and Singleton, there are two letters before you, one from Darla Klooster, one from Sher- Sharon Nicholas.
Nicholas, yeah. Is that what it is, Nicholas?
Councilman Cruz, are you ready?
Yes, Darla Klooster, please.
And then we go down to...
What, did Councilman Singleton?
Yeah, he put on his shirt on there.
Okay.
I heard him.
Yeah.
Uh, Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, there are three openings on this committee, um, there are three letters of interest before you, this is a selection made by the entire city council.
Okay. Do we have three vacancies?
Mm-hmm.
Do we do this just by, uh, motion or a vote, or how do you do this?
No, we all...
No, this is a whole council vote.
You can do it, and you can do all three together.
There's only three.
I move we do all three at once.
All three, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second, sorry, background there.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So those who have applied have been appointed.
Yeah.
And I think we do have one gentleman here, Mr. Farmer, did you wanna say anything?
And thank you for applying.
And then just a couple reminders for council, on, uh, tomorrow, I guess, February sixteenth, um, at the Littleton Community Center, six thirty PM, the Central Galt Corridor Kickoff Workshop. And on February seventeenth, the Galt Beautification Committee will meet at three thirty, at the City Health Community Room, that takes us to our next council meeting on March first. That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, let's hear, start with you, Councilman Cruz, any comments?
I do. Uh, unfortunately, the primary subject that this will be directed at is, I believe...
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it, forgot the staff, staff comments. I, I knew you didn't have any. I can tell. Okay, go ahead then.
Uh, just a little note on public comment, on the public comment portions of our meeting, I know most people understand this, but I just needed to make sure that it was understood. Um, public comment is just that, it's a chance for you to give us your opinion and views. We listen, we take notes, we find out the facts, then we address, address the issues. It's not a chance to argue your point. If you're up here to make a splash, sorry, we're not, we're gonna disappoint you. Uh, if you wanna discuss something with a member of council, please, by all means, set up an appointment with us, we're all available for you to sit down and talk with us. Uh, what we wanna hear when you come to the dials is your opinion, don't come to us and look for an argument.
Thank you.
Well said.
Councilman Singleton, comment?
I have nothing, thank you.
Um, I, I wanna just reiterate what Mark said, that this is a council that's always, that we have an open door policy, you'll, you'll more often than not find three, at least three of us in there at any one time.
In different places.
In different places, not discussing the same thing. Um, but we are always available if anyone wants to speak to us about anything, and, and, and please do that because, uh, we are really concerned about what our constituents think, and we value your opinion.
Okay. Uh, I've mentioned a town hall meeting for the end of March, and I'm wondering if we need to agendize that for council approval at the first meeting in March? If so, I would like to ask approval of that with the council. I'll come back to you first.
I approve it, okay.
Councilman Singleton?
Sure.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we will agendize that for the first meeting in March as to location and all the details, and I think Vice Mayor Powers has...
Oh, I, I did forget something, I talked to Jason about it, I'd like, uh, to, if the, uh, rest of the council members so approve, I would like to look into, um, the mayor and city councils having some kind of a festival for, um, the citizens of Galt. So I'd like to put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Then I will...
There's a workshop tomorrow night...
Yes, Barbara, Liz, Liz said it.
Yeah.
The kickoff, uh, Central Galt Corridor kickoff meeting.
Okay, and the last item that I wanted to, uh, talk about was, uh, about two thousand five, maybe it's later, we had a consultant come and do an economic, um, strategy, economic development strategy, I think you all have these monitors, and, uh, we had a committee at one time that was working on it, uh, they've since dissolved, um, and the city manager has been still working on it, and, and I've been visiting some of the businesses, uh, the owners of BIA, BIA Court on Blue and, um, Building Materials, BMD, um, but I would like for us to plan, uh, sometime in the future, uh, maybe an update on where we are with our economic development strategy. I know our city manager's gonna be gone to Hawaii, so maybe when he gets back, we can work up something on that. I think it's really important now, as we see all these funds that we probably are gonna lose, uh, maybe not redevelopment, who knows where that's gonna go, but, uh, we're gonna have to stand on our, pretty much on our own two feet, I think, in the future. So I think we really need to focus on, um, retaining businesses that we have as well as reaching out to possibilities. Uh, and we have a good blueprint here, we just need to, uh, maybe organize it a little better. So, if that's okay with our city manager, we'll look at it.
I can work on putting together an update, report back to the council on progress we've made on implementing that, and, you know, additional things we wanna accomplish, maybe, um, target it for April.
Sounds good. When you get back from Hawaii.
All right.
Okay. Uh, I think, I think we're ready to adjourn. This council meeting is adjourned at twenty minutes to 10:00. Thank you, everybody, change.
What's that? I know.
Well, I'm going to...
Yeah, I'm gonna suggest, you're going to the store, right?
Well...
The board approves.